Turn on your microphones, please. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act of 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. If any member has reason to believe this meeting is being held in violation of this act, they should state so at this time. Seeing none, we'll have the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the freedom and liberty which stands on our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Mrs. Werner?
Here.
Mr. Vannudo?
Here.
Ms. Hassel?
Here.
Mr. Levin?
Here.
Mrs. Notch?
Here.
Ms. Sheehan?
Here.
Mr. Walsh?
Mr. Zexer?
Here.
Mr. Cattado?
Here.
Thank you.
We need a resolution for the 42723 Cape CJ LLC. Would someone make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'm sorry, we'll do that. The minutes were first, sorry about that. Let's go back to the minutes. The minutes of March 23rd, 2022. Motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Notch, seconded by Ms. Sheehan. Ms. Hassel?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Abstain.
Mrs. Notch?
Abstain.
Ms. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Zexer?
Yes.
Mr. Vannudo?
Yes.
Mrs. Werner?
Abstain.
Thank you.
Okay, now we need a resolution. A motion for Cape CJ LLC, 1301 Beach Avenue. Motion to approve the resolution.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Ms. Hassel, seconded by Mr. Vannudo. Ms. Hassel?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Abstain.
Mrs. Notch?
Abstain.
Ms. Sheehan?
No.
Mr. Zexer?
Yes.
Mr. Vannudo?
Yes.
Mrs. Werner?
Abstain.
Thank you.
I thought we had two noes on that before. Somebody said yes and they should vote no.
So, Mr. Cattado doesn't vote because we have seven other people voting tonight.
But he was the only one that was here for that meeting. So, if you weren't here for the meeting, how can you vote on the resolution?
So, I only call the top seven.
Right, but I'm just saying, somebody must have voted yes that was not here.
So, he voted no. So, since he didn't vote tonight because he's the eighth person...
Was there three yeses?
I think it was a...
There should have been only three yeses because that's all that they got for this resolution.
So, we have three yeses and one no and three abstain.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay. That's all right. Anytime.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the resolution for Roseman's Marina LLC by Roseman's Lane.
I make that motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Sheehan, seconded by Mr. Vannudo. Ms. Hassel?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Abstain.
Mrs. Notch?
Abstain.
Ms. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Zexer?
Yes.
Mr. Vannudo?
Yes.
Mrs. Werner?
Abstain.
Thank you.
Okay, our next resolution is for Stevens Steger, 905 Page Street. We need a motion.
I'll make the motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sheehan, seconded by Ms. Hassel. Ms. Hassel?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Abstain.
Mrs. Notch?
Abstain.
Ms. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Zexer?
Yes.
Mr. Vannudo?
Yes.
Mrs. Werner?
Abstain.
Thank you.
Okay, our first application tonight was to be Elaine's Property Management. I'd like a motion to adjourn this application until May 23rd meeting.
Excuse me, it's May 25th, please. May 25th, 2023.
May 25, 2023. A motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I just have a question. Is this going to affect anything with the timeframe for this?
In what way?
I know we only have so much time to hear certain applications.
They have agreed to the adjournment.
Okay, I just wanted to make a question.
They're aware, yes. Thank you. So, we have a motion by Mrs. Notch, seconded by Mr. Levin. Ms. Hassel?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Mrs. Notch?
Yes.
Ms. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Zexer?
Yes.
Mr. Vannudo?
Yes.
Mrs. Werner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, our first application tonight is 429 Beach Avenue. You can have a seat. Thank you.
Did you name the chair or is it more...
If you can make sure that all your microphones are on.
Yes, and please speak into the microphone. Thank you.
Sure. Again, Madam Chair, good evening and members of the board. Good evening, board professionals. My name is Joel Fleischman of Fleischman Daniels Law Offices, and I actually have the pleasure to be here this evening to represent 429 Beach Avenue LLC, the owner of the property at 429 Beach Avenue. Sitting to my left is Ross Hammer. Ross, along with Linda Cavalla, is also in the second row, are the principals of 429 Beach. I'll just stand for maybe... Do I have to carry the mic or...
Yes.
Yes.
Also, back behind me is Christina Durigo and Tom Durigo, the architects for this project. Tom's a licensed professional architect. Christina is also an associate architect, and they have designed this project. And we're here tonight to hopefully win your approval to allow this building, we need several variances, and to allow this historic building at 429 to be enhanced with 12 hotel rooms. And we'll get to that part. I just want to establish that we do have jurisdiction to proceed tonight because I did publish notice of tonight's hearing on April 12th, and I mailed notices out to the 200-foot list on April 14th. And I did duly file my attorney affidavit with Ms. Keenan, so I believe we have permission to proceed. Is that okay, Madam Chair?
Other than the three of you, is anyone planning on doing testimony?
Thank you. Excellent question. It would be really just Tom and Ross and perhaps Christina. I would ask to have them sworn when the time is right, if you're solicitor, whenever that would be. Would you like to have them sworn now? Okay, why don't you stand up and please?
Yes, thank you. Can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear to sell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. And with that, I'm going to substitute out. Jeff Barnes is going to take over as a...
Okay.
So, sir, could we know your credentials?
Yes, I'm Thomas Durigo.
Keep your mic.
Yep. My name is Thomas Durigo. I'm principal architect of TJD Architects Engineers, licensed architect of the state of New Jersey and several surrounding states, and practiced for over 30 years, appeared before many land use boards, and provided testimony throughout South Jersey.
Okay, so we'll accept...
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. May I proceed?
Yes.
Thank you. So, I won't belabor the point. We'll get to Mr. Durigo quickly. I know you have other matters tonight. But the property, I think probably everybody is familiar with it, 429 Beach, and probably familiar with it because there's a fabulous restaurant on the first floor known as Taco Cabalito. It's a wonderful Mexican restaurant. And the idea that we're looking for your approval for tonight is, in addition to the renovations that have been made to Taco, is to renovate the third and fourth floors of this building to allow 12 hotel rooms. They're not bed and breakfast rooms. They're hotel rooms. And this project did get conceptual approval from the HBC, believe it or not, a little, almost to the day, April 25th of last year, we got the conceptual approval from it. What we are asking you for tonight, the approval, is we need a D1 use variance in order to have two principal uses on this site. So, you have two principal uses. You have the restaurant use on the first and second floors, and on the third and fourth floors, you'll have the hotel use. Under your ordinance, that requires a D1 variance, and I hope that you will be able to determine at the end of our presentation that we have met the legal criteria to get a use variance, to get the D1 variance. If we can show you that this site is well-suited for what we're proffering to you to approve, then under the municipal land use law, that says, okay, it's well-suited, that satisfies the public, it serves the public good, and therefore that's a purpose of zoning and a positive criteria is met. We also have to show you that the negative criteria met, which is that there's no detriment to the public good, to the public welfare, and that it's not inconsistent or detrimental to your zone plan and your zone master plan, your zoning ordinance and your zoning master plan. And I think that's easily satisfied because your ordinance says if either of these uses was there individually, they're permitted. So, we're really not asking for uses that aren't recognized as permitted in the C2 Beach District, but it's just that there's two principal uses due to the size of the hotel usage. It exceeds the amount that's permitted under your ordinance, so that kicks us into a D1 use variance. Also, we're requesting tonight is a waiver of site plan, and the reason for that is we're not changing the building. The building is staying as is, except for exterior renovations. There's no enlargement, and the only exception to that is when we weren't able to really negotiate an access through the, there's a four-foot alleyway, which I guess would be to the south. If we were able to negotiate an easement with an extra neighbor, we could have put our emergency access there, but we couldn't. And so, the architects, as they'll explain, they did put another emergency access on Decatur. And we're going to have to go to the city, and hopefully this would be a condition of approval, that we will go to the city to get a license to put a small access that will be needed for emergency access. But the project is going to result in really returning this building to the historic uses that really started back in roughly like 1879, when the building was built by Mr. Denizo, which I hope that's the way you say the name. I've been saying it with the T hard, but I think it's Denizo. And as you'll hear from Ross, Mr. Hammer, that his intention is to really pay homage to that historic background by naming the hotel after Mr. Denizo. So, we're trying to bring all that in. There are a couple of, there are several C variances, bulk and area variances, that Mr. Hurlis called out, and they are, for the most part, existing nonconformities because it's the building occupies the whole property. So, coverage is exceeded and setbacks are exceeded, but it is an existing structure, and there's really nothing we can do about that. But we're not enlarging that. The only two variances that I think are of new import is the parking, which we will address, hopefully to your satisfaction. We've made arrangements for that. And the other is for signage, and that will also be part of our application tonight. So, there are no new exhibits other than what's been submitted with our application. I did submit an exhibit list to the solicitor and to your board secretary, and with that, I would have Mr. Hammer proceed with his testimony. So, Ross, for the record, just tell the board who you are, how long you've been in Cape May, and how long you've been involved with this project and other projects.
Sure, sure. So, my name's Ross Hammer. I am the president of 429 Beach Avenue LLC, which is the company that holds the building. I just wanted to, before I get started, just to recognize Joel, I think he's done an incredible job with working with us, as well as Craig Hurlis, on getting everything together for you guys. I thought you did an incredible job with your introduction there, and I appreciate that. As well as Tom Durigo, someone like us, we work on a lot of different projects, and I guess for us, we do a lot of stuff in Cape May and in West Cape May. We do, we renovate old historical buildings, contributing and key contributing buildings. And to work with such a Class A architect like Tom and his two daughters, that I know I put a lot of pressure on you guys, but I find it really rewarding to work with a company like both of you guys. So, I appreciate that, and I just wanted to get that out of the way. just wanted to get that out of the way. So, I grew up in Cape May. I grew up on Madison Avenue, where my grandma sold her zineas next to the water tower. Ironically, this year, she was given the beautification award right before she passed away. And I think, for me and for what I do, I think, you know, I would like to follow in those footsteps by renovating these historic properties to kind of fall in line with the beautification of Cape May. I feel so lucky to work on a property like 429 Beach Avenue. Never did, I think, in a million years would I work on such a historic building that had so many historic values. If you look up, you know, a lot of old photos of the building, you could see, you know, almost an exact resemblance of what stands there today. And I think that's really important. In terms of what Joel was talking about a little bit was the man that really built 429 Beach Avenue, as well as the Lafayette Hotel, which was right next door, and the Iron Pier. His name was Victor Denisot, which is a French local entrepreneur that I think resonates really well with me. He built the Iron Pier, which was probably the main attraction in terms of bringing people into the city and really creating this city into becoming the beach town and resort that we all see today. This pier, you know, came out 1,000 feet into the water that had amusements, retail shops, you know, they brought in steamboats where they would unload people for a dollar a day, sailboats that would pull up to the docks. I mean, it was really, I think, you know, from reading the history of this, he was a big part of not only building the Iron Pier, but designing 429 Beach Avenue in the hotel that was previously there, which was the Ocean View Hotel, which was on the second, third, and fourth floor of this building. And then everyone knows the Lafayette Hotel, which is now the Marquis de Lafayette, which is the giant building that sat there. He had built that. So, what, like Joel said, what we were proposing, so for right now, we have on the second, the first and second floor, we have Taco Cabalito. On the third and fourth floor, we were interested in doing a boutique hotel and naming it after someone who had such, you know, such impact to Cape May. And so, we were going to call it the Denisot Hotel after Victor Denisot. And then maybe talk a little bit about how, you know, the check-in process would work and?
Yes. If you could explain to the board how this hotel operates. I know you have the Buttonwood and you can, you know, sort of relate it to that as well, since you have experience doing that. So, maybe explain, I don't know if I'm being heard, sorry, explain that to the board, how we're going to operate, talk about the parking.
Sure.
The check-in process and the employment.
Sure. So, we do have a lot of experience with doing smaller boutique hotels. It's something that we personally manage, and we found it much easier to be able to manage a smaller hotel. We would have more of a, you know, a face-to-face customer service rather than one of these larger hotels. The way the process would work, similar to what we do at, say, for instance, like the Buttonwood, it's a self-check-in process. So, in the beginning of the day, they would get check-in instructions sent over to their phone, either by text message or email. There is a code, a combination on each room, and they ultimately would check in themselves. And for, so, that's what's going on at Buttonwood. We would do the same process here at the Denisot Hotel, other than the parking process. So, we have a golf cart service in town that really takes people around throughout the day. For all of our properties, we would tie in that golf cart service for, we have 12 parking lots, parking spaces on Town Bank Road, which is on the same, where's it, was it Town Bank or?
Bank.
Or Bank Street, sorry, Bank Street. We're, yeah, that converts into Decatur. But so anyways, we have 12 parking spots on Bank Street, where we would use our golf cart service to pick up our guests at the parking lot and take them down to the entrance of the hotel, which would be the same entrance into the restaurant, where they would be assessed by one of our managers there that could, you know, assist them if they needed any help. And, oh, as well as our cleaning service. So, we have a cleaning service that cleans our restaurant every morning. They're also willing to clean out any of the rooms that were used that night. So, we're kind of all tied into the same employment activity within the building.
Madam Chair, that's all I have for Mr. Hammer at this time. And unless there's questions, I could proceed with the architect.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So, you said you have 12 spaces on Bank Street. That is 12 spaces you lease from the city at the Bank Street lot?
Yes.
Are they already paid for?
Yes.
Are they going to be used for anything else but this?
No.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
I think the parking agreement with the city doesn't allow any reserved parking places.
Say that one more time, sorry.
If this, in your exhibit that you sent, if you read that carefully, it says there are no designated spots allocated anybody. It's first come, first served.
Yes, we understand that.
Well, then, then you don't have 12 spaces reserved specifically for this project.
Are you saying that there's not enough spaces that the city leased us, entered into a lease with us for spaces they don't have?
Don't know that.
Well, I would like, I would think the city would not have entered into a lease where he paid consideration for 12 spaces and then not have, even if they're not designated, but there should be enough at the lot. Do you know a reason why there isn't enough at the lot?
No, I.
I mean, nobody at the city told you there wouldn't be enough spaces? Is that correct?
Yeah. And when they did become available, they sold them, sold me the parking spaces. So, they must have a dedicated number of.
We use, I mean, we use the city's form. I submitted that with the application.
I would refer you to this, where it says the city declines that there are any spaces specifically allocated for a project.
That means there's no designated spaces. They're not like.
That's right.
Labeled. But that doesn't mean there's not, there's an insufficient number. I don't think that's the conclusion that you can draw.
How do we know that? You know, parking is a premium in this town.
Oh, absolutely. I understand that. That's why he made a concerted effort to make sure he went and got, as I guided him, I said, you have to go get spaces from the city, and he did. I'm sure we could get something from the city to clarify whether there's enough spaces to cover a lease agreement. I'm sure we could get something like that, I would think.
I guess my question for asking about the spots was, that's dated 2022. It's not dated 2023. That's why I was asking.
The renewals in May.
Okay. That's why I was just asking if it was, and I guess what they have, is that just an example, the one that you submitted?
Yes.
Example, no, that's a signed agreement.
Well, why I'm asking that, because one says it's for the Yod Avenue.
One has two and one has 10.
Right. And they have different owners, right?
Yeah.
That's why I was asking, are these all going to be underneath your name and the restaurant, or is it going to be underneath somebody else's name?
No, my name and the restaurant.
Okay.
My name and the restaurant.
It should be the 429 Beach, I would, I would think.
Okay. Because I think the one says Yod Avenue, or not Yod Avenue, it says.
One says Roseman Lane.
What does it say?
Roseman Lane.
Roseman's.
That's my house. That's my personal house. Yeah. But yet, for the parking spots, each parking spot doesn't have a name, you know, per spot. I think why it says that is because they have enough spots for the amount of tickets that they had sold. It's just, you know, not designating a spot just for, you know, say, these 12 in the front are for Hammer or these 12 in the back are for like the Mad Batter, right?
And if somebody comes in with an extra car, do you let them park there or?
That they would have to find their own park. We have one spot per.
Okay.
Perhaps you could provide some testimony on how the parking process works. If you're going to book a hotel room and it's all self-checkout.
Could you use the mic?
Yeah, sure. All right. So, maybe you can, is it on?
Yep.
Explain how the parking actually works. If someone books a reservation at your hotel, for instance, and it's all self-check-in and it's all done by cell phone, do they, are they also told that they have a parking spot somewhere and you explain to them how the process works and what needs to happen?
Yeah, that's all in the check-in instructions.
Right. And it's all going to be at this designated spot that you have that has these 12 parking.
Yes.
Right. And these 12 parking spaces didn't exist before this application. You got these spots just for the hotel, right?
Yes.
It's not contingent upon some other approval that occurred at that facility that required you to have 12 spots?
No, I got 12 because we had 12 rooms.
And have you ever used this parking process on any of your other places?
No.
Is there anyone else?
We already have parking at our other places.
Got it. Is there anyone else in the city that uses the same kind of process that you have that you can show has been effective, efficient?
So, yeah. The Mad Batter does this. The hotel, what is that called? The?
Caravella.
Yeah, yes. They buy city parking spots for their hotel rooms.
Do you have to have them put something in the window that knows that they're part of your hotel?
They have a tag that, you know, the person that's taking them to the golf, the person that's taking them to the hotel would actually give them a tag per car. Yep.
I do have one question. It's this particular piece of paper that was in the packet. It says the hotel will consist of 11 rooms and that the spots are 11 for the guest rooms and one for the housekeeper.
That was, when we, we didn't, that's probably my mistake, and Ross had prepared that operational overview in response to some discussions I'd had with board professional. And I didn't catch that it said 11. There was some confusion in the beginning about 11 plus another room for housekeeping. That was eradicated and changed to the 12, which is the present application. That's before you, Madam Chair. So, that's why that is, I hope that clarifies that. It is an application for 12.
And there is not a housekeeper?
No.
Saying that your other help?
Yeah. So, we have a company that comes in that cleans our restaurant. Those same cleaners are interested in wanting to be a part of the hotel and actually clean out the hotel rooms and handle the 12 rooms.
And where do they usually park or?
So, they get their own parking on the street. They normally come first thing in the morning.
Let me just, if Madam Chair, if I could just ask Ross to explain, and it's in the exhibits, and Mr. Derigo will visit this, but there is a counter in Taco, if I think, you know, that you're thinking that will be used, it's not just virtual check-in, it's primarily virtual. But that counter is going to be used if, in the event there's Taco employees, that would be used to assist guests. Is that right?
Yeah, yeah. So, the managers of the restaurant, as well as the hostess, will be trained to help check-in with the check-in process if they need it.
Your checkout, you said that the cleaners come early in the morning? Well, when's your checkout?
10 o'clock.
I'm sorry?
10 o'clock.
Okay.
Yep.
So, your restaurant's like open at 10?
No, we open at 12. So, right when they get done, they would start the rooms.
And how late is the restaurant open till?
At night. Typically, like 10, 10 o'clock, latest 11 in the summertime.
And if they, people check in after that, they'll be, who will assist them at that time?
If there's a later checkout.
Or check-in, if they come in after the restaurant is closed?
Sure. So, we have a process that would be from the morning to 6:00 PM. If they ultimately want to check in after that, they would have to, you know, find their own parking spot if they'd like to park in front of the hotel at that point.
Okay.
Or they could check into the front where the hostess is, and they can give them a parking ticket to park on Bank Street. We just wouldn't have the service take them down to the hotel after.
How do the?
Typically, we wouldn't have late check-ins like that at Buttonwood.
How does it work when somebody wants to leave their room and go out and come back and your restaurant's closed? How do they get in?
There's a separate entrance.
And our, Madam Chair, our architect will explain that when we hit the site plan and the architectural plans.
Is there only one restaurant in there?
Yes.
Because I know before there was a different restaurant upstairs versus downstairs.
Yes. So, there was the Iron Pier that was on the second floor. So, that, there's no Iron Pier anymore.
Is there plans to have two different restaurants?
No. No, it's almost like you're competing with yourself when you have two restaurants in the same building there.
I have a question. Along with the parking, and this is off of various specifications, you say that should the city no longer have spaces available, the applicant has the ability to park cars at a property owned by Ross Hammer at 714 Madison Avenue. So, I'm assuming that that's the field where the flowers were from your grandmother, grand aunt, or whoever?
Yeah, yeah. So, we have a big open field there.
Yeah.
The back end of that field could ultimately be if we ever have an issue down the road.
In a residential area?
Yes.
Wouldn't that need approval?
We probably would have to come back to the board for that, yes. We would, it would be a residential area. You know, hopefully, nobody has a crystal ball, but hopefully the agreements that we're going to have, we have with the city will just renew. That's the plan. We all know parking's a premium. A lot of, the restaurant has no parking now. So, we're trying to do the best we can to reinvigorate this property, recognizing the parking shortage and doing the best that can be done under the current circumstances. The fact that he owns that additional property, I put that in there just so the board would understand, we are thinking down the line in the event something happens.
Well, the thing is, with the city, you're paying for the parking spots. If he put it on his own lot, he wouldn't be paying for it.
That's true.
But it would need a.
But we clearly need some type of zoning approval because that would not be permitted in a residential zone.
So, in the event that the application is approved this evening, you all agree that as a condition, that in the event that those 12 parking spaces are taken away by the fact that they don't lease into anymore, that you have to come back before the board to find an alternative?
If we could find an alternative, I wouldn't want to have to stop using the building because that's a source of revenue to, you know, I wouldn't want to turn down or stop a function that's going. I don't know that that, I could come back, but I don't know where, how that would end up.
I would be happy to do that. I see.
Well, I mean, I don't think, I think the board doesn't want to, all of a sudden you have 14 cars and all of a sudden you're starting to park in Madison Avenue and now it becomes.
But we wouldn't use Madison, we wouldn't use Madison, of course, until we had the appropriate approval. That's given.
I get it. I guess the whole idea is the board is listening to representations made by you about your operation and things that have been a success and your idea of how you're going to use these 12 parking spaces. And perhaps that is a big factor in their decision because parking in shore communities is such a premium. So, you have this building that has 200 whatever seats in it, and now all of a sudden you're adding more to this building. And to resolve that issue, you went and were creative and came up with a unique way to get 12 parking spots, and you have this deal that exists. And everybody on the board would be like, well, that's pretty good. It's like one for one. You have one room, you have one parking.
Well, I have a suggestion then. If we could agree to that, let's say we lost the two spaces, then we could have to, are you saying we'd have to shut down two rooms?
I'm not saying anything. I'm actually.
I don't have a problem coming back to the board. You know, Ross, you don't have a problem. We could come back.
No, no.
We would try to find an alternate location. Ross has been a lifelong resident here. I'm sure he knows where, you know, how we could maneuver to find something. I would like a reasonable amount of time, of course, to do it, you know, something like that. But no, I wouldn't have a problem with that as a condition. We just want it to be pro, I would just want it to be pro-rata that if there was two spaces, like if we kept the 10, but the city says, oh, we gave two to somebody else, then two rooms would have to be, if that's. rooms would have to be, if that's what the board wants, the two rooms would, if that's a condition. I'm not suggesting I want that, but we could agree to that if that was a?
Not my call, just asking.
No, if, Madam Chair, if that's something that?
Kind of a discussion about?
I think we're, again, we're trying to, and members of the board to really address, nobody knows that parking's a premium more than, as you do, Ross's, he knows that's a premium. That's why he went and got the other agreements. So we recognize that as an issue.
Can I have first right of renewal?
Yes.
Be on the mic, please, if you're going to speak.
Yeah, you're sworn. Why don't you step up here? Sit here. This is again for the board, Christina Derigo, she's a, and also architect on this project.
Hi, I was just asking, Ross, I believe he has first right of renewal on that lease for the parking spaces.
Yes.
May we proceed at this point, Madam Chair?
One more question for you. On your operational overview, number one, parking, the last quote is incorrect. Assume you agree with that?
I have the other copy. Do you have it handy?
If you could use the mic.
I'm going to let the architect address that because he's going to explain the plan and how it's going to work. So I think the question is well-taken, and I think we need to address it. So if we could, we could proceed with the site plan aspect, and I think that will hopefully, I'll direct him to answer that question, to straighten that out. It talks about where the entrance is to the hotel. So I think you can address that. If, Madam Chair, if we may proceed, then I think we can have Mr. Derigo. I want to draw your attention, of course, to the three exhibits that are behind you. I'd like you to, you've already been duly sworn, you're also qualified as an expert for tonight's hearing. You prepared the plans that are before this board this evening, is that true?
That's true.
Okay. And I'd like you to just, if you could acclimate the board first to?
Can you get his mic?
Get your mic, Tom, and tell the board where this property is, and please walk them through what our project involves and what's being proposed.
Right, I'm sure everyone's familiar with the Decatur and Beach Corner. It's the primary location of this hotel and restaurant. So the current entrance is at the corner of Decatur.
Tom, just one moment.
So all the renderings that you have posted, was that part of your submission?
Yes.
Okay, and are you?
I put that on the record, I'm sorry, before you?
Got it, and are we labeling them just what you have on the bottom, like SR1, whatever it may be? Is that how you're going to?
Well, if you, however you want.
Yeah, that's fine by me.
A1, A2, A3.
Whatever they have on the right, bottom right is fine, assuming they're all?
Okay.
Yeah, that's SK1.
Thank you.
These are the plan diagrams.
Jeff, I did actually send, I sent it to Rich, the list of exhibits. We could, if, with your permission, the, put the minor site plan up just for a moment, please, Tom. That, we could call that, I think I labeled that as exhibit A1 for the purposes of the hearing.
Yeah, you actually called it SP1.
SK1, okay, SK1.
SP1.
This is SP1, there's SK1.
SP1 and then SK1.
And SK2, okay. Just refer to them as you go through, please, Tom.
Okay. There again, this is the property, corner of Decatur and Beach. As you know, the entrance, the existing entrance has always been right there at the corner. Here we are at the first floor, existing condition. This is the primary entrance. The check-in desk that was discussed earlier is here and on this lateral side as well. The, it's anticipated that this front desk would be potentially the secondary check-in station that Ross mentioned earlier, whereas this is on the side of that facing into the interior is more of the maître d' station. What we've done is we've created a new lobby that's exclusive to the upper floors, well, actually all the upper floors, but it's fire-protected and it is a bona fide means of egress for those levels, including the new elevator that's going to serve the third level and provide handicap access. This is the second level. You may be familiar that the restaurant continues at the second level, but we have provided, the code required, two means of egress from all upper levels, and they're fire-protected. There's a challenge. As mentioned early on, we attempted to get something off of the alley, but that was not available to us, and we've had to come up with a secondary exit along Decatur. You can see it down here. The plan is to renovate the second level of the restaurant with some new features, and it's in the wings waiting to happen pending our approval. But you can see that this, this level here, here's the exit down on the ground floor that we're going to be needing to appeal to the city to allow us this exit. It comes to the back here through these doors, and there's also an accessibility ramp there as well. More of a loading ramp than accessibility ramp. Currently, there's one, a smaller version of that, serving the loading of the kitchen. The third level, again, we have the elevator service to the third level, and it serves all the six rooms at this, at this level. We have the second means out the back that?
Turn my mic off by accident.
But it provides the required exit. The fourth floor, shown here, does not have elevator access. We need that space for override for the elevator, and it still has the two means of stairs to get them out. So that's our, that's our game plan.
I have one quick question.
Yes.
You said that you're putting the stairs out to the side with the second egress for the second floor, and what was the second egress before?
There was none.
There was none, so it was only just one?
Right, it was quite not compliant. A great deal out of compliance. We're improving not only the restaurant egress, but also the upper, upper levels as well.
Tom, let me, let me just direct you a little bit. Like, in other words, as a result of these renovations, the building will now be fully code-compliant. Is that correct?
Yes.
Code-compliant and ADA accessible.
And ADA accessible, correct?
Yes.
There will be an ADA accessible room, of course, as required?
Yes, on the third level.
On the third floor, is that right?
Yes.
And the Lulu elevator will service those first three floors, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Can you explain, did you, you had your back, so I wasn't sure if you explained the entrance, where the entrance is and how the hotel?
Yeah, I'll repeat that real quick for you. Where are we? Here we go. That's the existing entrance at the corner. This would be the primary restaurant entrance and as well as a secondary check-in for the hotel space. However, the hotel has its own separate independent entrance over here, which is in this new lobby, which is fire-safe from the restaurant and has access to the elevator as well.
I know on one of your exhibits, it's probably SK2. You have a picture of the?
Yes, let me show that.
Front desk, let me stand up.
Right.
Maybe you can explain to the board how that?
Yeah, here's a photo of that short?
It's SK3, I believe.
Yeah, SK3. We have a photo of the existing condition of the newly renovated check-in desk that's facing right, the frontage of Beach Ave, right in front of the entrance. This desk continues down the side, much lengthier, which is really the maître d' station. But this was anticipated as possibly being the secondary check-in.
Assistant to hotel operation, correct, for check-in?
Correct.
And you touched on signage. You know we need a signage variance. Can you just explain, using SK3, what you're proposing?
Right, well, this is, we, we had an idea that we would go with a vertical sign, which is somewhat consistent with the period. This is the concept that we've come up with. The sign is 20 square feet. The thing we're asking for, however, is we'd like it in three locations. We'd like it here at the alleyway wall, the frontage facing, facing Beach Avenue, and then around the corner, so that traffic can see it, there's a repeat of that sign. Unfortunately, I don't have that here to show you, but it would be vertically oriented and located here at the corner along Decatur. So it'd be quite visible from traffic in this direction. That's, I guess that's westerly traffic. And then we have another one on this side, again, to have visibility coming from the northerly, the easterly traffic, and then a front sign, as shown on that elevation. But they're virtually the same sign repeated in three positions, and that, we're requesting a variance to allow that so that we have the visibility. Otherwise, you really don't, you can't really identify the property, and knowing, if you've traveled Beach Avenue, you know it's difficult to pick up on signage.
Now, Tom, you know I've represented to the board that there are no changes in terms of the size of the building, except for the small access ramp. Is that correct?
Well, yes. In terms of the footprint, that is absolutely correct. That we did have to, in the interest of providing that accessibility for egress, we enlarged the second, excuse me, the third and fourth levels to accommodate the new stair, which is over the roof within the same original footprint. And that has been, that's been, received preliminary acceptance by the HBC.
And that's in the rear of the building? It's not visible?
That's right. It's, the only visible portion of that is along Decatur, but it's virtually imperceivable. It's been detailed with the exact same siding and windows and trims and brackets that you see there currently.
And you can also confirm that the project involves a total revamping of all mechanical systems, the roofing system?
Yes.
All those systems are going to be renewed, new and up to code, correct?
That's correct. It's a substantial project. Currently, the third level is full of ductwork all over the floors that's going to have to come out, and a lot of the existing rooftop equipment is going to be replaced with something more workable for the new systems at the apartment, as well as the restaurant.
Now, you're also aware that for this project to be approved, as we're presenting, we need a use variance for tonight, a D1 variance, correct?
Yes, because of the zoning ordinance.
Now, in your opinion, you know if a, if a property is particularly well-suited for a proposed use, it's deemed to serve the public welfare and the public good, which is a purpose of zoning. In your professional opinion, do you feel that this project does serve or is particularly well-suited for this site? And if so, explain to the board why?
I do think that. I think that it restores the entire building to its original use, and I think that's important for the history and the historical integrity of the building, and I think that it helps it become more self-sustaining as well, which is another positive thing for the community at large, applicant, of course. But I think it really does support even the historic district in that vein, that we're restoring it to its original intended use. In fact, you know, it's just, it's now going to be compliant, whereas there were very few life safety codes back in the day that applied. So I think we're trying to find a really good median there, and I think it's a very positive project.
And you can confirm that both of those uses that we're proposing are permitted in the zone, correct?
They are. It's a nuance, I guess, of the zoning code that you can't have an accessory use that's over 25%, and we're more or less 50/50 here, so by definition, we have to then seek this use variance to allow the two approved, approvable uses in the zone. But it's really because of the way the ordinance is written that we're asking for that.
Also, we need several CE variances, correct? Bulk and area variances, as called out by Mr. Hurles's letter, correct? Would you agree most of those do represent existing non-conforming conditions?
Yes, yes.
That we're not expanding or enlarging by this application?
That's accurate, yes.
So there are two variances that I've noted to the board tonight that we do need, parking, and we also need for the signage. Would you agree with that?
I do.
Okay. And do you feel that this project does promote purposes of zoning that we've talked about? Perhaps if you do agree that they do, that it does, would you maybe put on the record what those purposes are of zoning? Because that's important for this board to be able to grant the CE variances, as well as the D variance, so?
Well, I, as I said earlier, I do think it supports the mission of the zone and in multiple ways, restoring this property to its original use. It doesn't, it's not inconsistent with the intent of the zone, in my opinion. The compliance issues that the upgrades are going to afford are important for life safety and general welfare. And I don't see that there is any negative criteria, you know, created by these improvements, not to the, to the good of the public nor to the zone.
As the architect, I mean, would you say this is creating a desirable visual environment, a purpose of zoning? Would you agree with that?
Yes, and we've made efforts to make sure that it complies with the original fabric of the building as well, so.
And we're not diminishing any light air and open space by this, is that correct?
No.
And do you feel this is an appropriate two uses, if you will, for this, for this site?
I definitely think that is the case. They are both approvable uses, again, because of the nuance of the zoning ordinance. We have to seek that variance, but I think that they are both positive and in this, you know, for this zone, it's exactly what you would want.
And do you see any detriment from this project? Any detriment to the public good? Any detriment or substantial detriment? Do you see any detriment from?
I do not.
So you don't see any substantial detriment, obviously, if you don't see any detriment, correct?
No.
To the public good?
Correct.
To the zone plan and zone, and master plan and zoning ordinance of the City of Cape May? Do you see any detriment to that?
I do not.
Have you had an opportunity to review Mr. Hurles's letter of February 10th, 2023?
Yes, we've gone through it.
And you've reviewed that letter in full?
Yes.
Okay. And do you feel that you have any difficulty complying with any of Mr. Hurles's comments?
I don't think so, no.
Okay. And you can confirm that we did get conceptual approval from the HBC?
That's right, yes, we did.
Okay. Madam Chair, at this point, I have no further questions for Mr. Derigo.
Can I have a question? I don't have SK3 in my packets.
That's a new, that's new from tonight.
So that is an exhibit?
Yes. We can leave that as an exhibit for you.
That would be exhibit A1, then?
Yeah, I apologize for that because I thought that was in the package, and that's my fault. I'm sorry.
So that's exhibit A1, then?
SK3 will be known, Mr. Barnes, is that okay? That SK3 will actually be known as exhibit A1 tonight?
That's fine, that's consistent with your chart.
I just have a quick question. So you're proposing six rooms on each of the levels with each of them having their own bathrooms?
Yes.
And that's with a shower and?
Yeah.
Any kitchen areas going in them?
Christina could give you a little more detail about that.
There's no kitchens in them. There'll be refrigeration, small refrigerators, like a typical hotel room, but no cooking.
And with the space going out the back for that egress, is there any seating being taken away with that for the restaurant?
No, it doesn't affect those levels. It only affects the upper levels, the upper two levels.
And the proposed amount of seating on the second floor is under the allowable occupancy space, so I believe we have 183 or 182 seats that were showing in the renovated space for floor two, but I believe we're, we're under the allowable.
I think the total seat, what, 299, is it?
Some, around about those numbers, I believe, over here.
And is that what's on the license now?
I couldn't hear you, what did you say?
Is that what's on the license now, 299 for the seating?
What's on your current license? I'm not sure.
I didn't know, I didn't know if seating was added, I guess is what I was asking. And I, my other question was, I see with the fire chief, he's saying he didn't, he needs approval for fire suppression and egress, that he didn't receive those plans?
There is an existing system. It's obviously going to have to be revamped for this renovation, and that will be submitted, I was seeing, to the construction office.
Yeah, that would, Madam Chair, and that would be a condition of approval, obviously, that the suppression system has to be submitted to? that the suppression system has to be submitted to the fire department for review and approval. I received that letter as well, and Ms. Keenan sent that to me, and that would be no problem.
Is it correct that the size of the rooms is smaller than allowed, and you're asking for a variance for that?
I don't believe we're asking for that. Ask Tom, are we?
They're actually larger than the original hotel rooms.
They are compliant with zoning.
My question with the egress on the bottom floor? You said you're going to need the city's approval. Is that city land that you're going to be going out on?
For the egress, ma'am? The ramp is going to be on the sidewalk, so we have to go, a condition of approval would be that we do have to go get a license agreement from the city counts, from the city government, to allow that easement to exist, that license.
So it's actually going to be on city property, then?
It actually will be on the.
Because I guess my concern is that there's a telephone pole there, and there's electrical poles there. Is that still going to be the right width for ADA compliant?
It is. We've certified that. We've gone through that. We know where those are. Doesn't affect those utility issues, and it's going to meet the egress requirements.
Okay, because that telephone pole is like, almost like over two feet into the sidewalk.
Yeah, it don't show it here, but we do have it on our other plans.
But I think before, it was backed into at one point and caused electrical issues. Yeah. And I think that's why they moved it more into the sidewalk, so it wouldn't be hit by delivery trucks.
But we obviously have to go get that approval from the city. We were aware of that. But we wanted to hopefully come here and present, and if we walk away with the approval tonight, then we'll go, we'll schedule that before city commission.
And then my other question has to do with the signage. You're only allowed, I guess, one sign per building, and you're going to be having the taco signs? And how many taco signs do you have?
I think there's one, right? Is there one?
There are three.
One hanging?
So there's one on the side of the building, and then there's one hanging from the front row?
So actually, you're out of compliance with the taco signs and two? Because you're only allowed one?
Well, that was there when you bought the property last year, so. It may, I would say, I'm not, I'm not going to concede that it's out of compliance, because it may have been a pre-existing non-conforming.
Okay. Why I'm just saying is, I mean, you now want five signs on this building, correct?
Well, you have the two uses, right?
Yeah, that's why.
And we're now, and I tried to explain that the rationale for that is that, you know, east and west traffic, the sign is invisible unless you have it on the side. And that's why we wanted this vertically oriented sign.
Well, I mean, but I'm just going with, a lot of motels only have one sign. They're not putting on all four sides of their building either. And that was, I guess.
I don't think they're obnoxious, personally. I think they're.
I think they look, hopefully you would agree, they're tastefully designed.
Again, I'm just looking at the fact that you put up three signs, and everybody else is going to want three signs. That's my.
I think our, at least our professional testimony at the moment is that what we're asking for is not inconsistent with the zone plan, it's not detrimental. It does help the traveling public identify the property, which is clearly a purpose of zoning under the municipal land use law. So there is absolutely no reason not to approve, unless there, we were asking for something egregious, and I don't think that we're asking for that, under the fact that we're asking for the approval of the two uses, and we do need to identify that.
Well, I mean, just one sign is supposed to be 20 square feet, and you're asking for 60.
Correct. But for a package of signage?
Actually, the 60 is just for the motel. It's not even including the taco place.
Is that, is that accurate?
Yes.
Each, each sign would be 20 square feet. It's like 19.7 to be exact.
Right, that's for the hotel, not including the taco signs.
Correct. We don't have that.
And they're period signs, and they're intended to give beachgoers visual landmark for the hotel, as well as the easter, easterly and westerly traffic along Beach Avenue. That's why it was designed in this, this configuration for those two side, side signs.
So wouldn't the variance be asking for three signs and not just two sign, additional signs? Because you already have one sign, so now you're looking for?
Well, I think the attorney mentioned.
The number of signs is not restricted. They can have multiple signs. The area is restricted.
The 20 square feet is what's?
Right, they're held to 20. They're asking for an additional, new signage of 60 square feet, in addition to whatever is already on the, on the building.
Okay. Thanks, Craig.
Got it.
Any other questions from the board?
A question for the owner. How long has this project been in vision? How long have you been working on this?
So I got the HPC conceptual approval last year around this time. We bought the building last March.
And how long is the architect in the building?
Oh, sorry, a long time.
At that time.
Yeah, about, yeah.
The reason I ask, it seems to me that an architect or firm would have had fire suppression as a very important element, and not have to wait to the fire chief says you need it. Why wouldn't that be in part of your submission?
It's existing. It's not, this board doesn't regulate the design of fire suppression systems. There is an existing system throughout the building currently.
Third floor also?
Yes.
And in the coopla as well.
For living, right? It was probably just for?
It was just to keep it protected. And that obviously is going to have to have substantial modification going forward, so all that will happen before it goes into, receive construction permits.
Okay, so if there's no more questions from the board, we can have Craig's video.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to summarize my February 10th, 2023, review memorandum for this application. It's a project located in the C2 Beach Business District. The applicant is asking for a site plan waiver, as well as use variances and other CE variances, for the addition of the 12 unit, what they're referring to as a boutique hotel on the third and fourth floors of the building. I'll move into the completeness review. They've asked for waivers from items 19, 21, I'm sorry, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 26, 27, 28, and 33. Of those, I supported all of those waivers with the exceptions of item number 20. That should be provided as a conditional approval, and that's providing the flooded zone information on the plan, as well as item number 22 is providing the first floor building elevations on the plan. So we did support the waivers for that. With regards to the site plan approval, this is a site that is almost entirely comprised of the building. It essentially fills out the entire lot, so there's no room for parking or other site plan approval. So in this case, we did support the site plan waiver, providing that they give us all the other information that we requested in our memorandum. So in that case, we did support that and did recommend deeming the application complete. Okay, talking about the use. So in the C2 Beach Business District, eating establishments as well as hotels are permitted uses. So the zoning ordinance contemplates both of these uses. Now, the ordinance also says you can't have two principal uses on the same site. And in this case, one is not accessory to the other. You know, a lot of times we'll see applications for hotels, and they have a restaurant in there. That's permitted, those two uses are permitted so long as that restaurant is less than 25% of the total floor area. In this case, this is like 50/50. So yes, they're asking for a use variance, the zoning ordinance contemplates it, doesn't contemplate the two uses. So I think in justifying the use variance, you have to, the negative impacts really, so can the site accommodate the second use is the big question the board should be asking. And I think in the hierarchy of the variances, obviously, you can't, this site can't be parked. There's no available onsite parking. So did the, does the applicant's testimony in providing for 12 off-street parking spaces satisfy the board's concern with that impairment or substantial negative impact to the zone? I was hoping they blew me away with their parking analysis and protocols. I still have questions. I don't know how this works. I don't know how the golf cart thing works. I don't know what happens if someone comes to the site and wants to drop off luggage, et cetera. So I would hope that they provide some additional detail that, that, if I have questions, I'm sure that many of the board members probably still do. So that's, that was my concern. Anyway, okay, so there's a use variance necessary, and that's for the addition of the 12-unit hotel, that's, which is the second use on the site. The site is also undersized. So in the zone, 10,000 square foot is required for this type of use. 5,477 square feet exists on the site, and there's obviously no room to acquire land or anything like that. And there also is a lot size minimum per hotel motel unit. So for 12 units, each unit is supposed to have 600 square foot. In this case, if you take the overall lot area, divide by the 12 units, you only get 456. So it's still undersized. Okay. I disagree with the testimony a little bit. They sort of minimize the variances with regards to the expansion. The expansion is wholly within the existing building envelope, but it's a vertical expansion. And it's a vertical expansion, it's in the front yard setback, the rear yard setback, and the side yard setback. So it creates vertical expansion within that envelope that could impact light air and open space to adjoining properties. So I didn't hear a lot of testimony with regards to that, but it certainly, the back part of the building is being expanded, and that volume is being filled up by the third and fourth floor expansion. So that, that should be addressed. Okay. The rear yard step, I'm sorry, let's start on the front yard setback. So for Decatur Street, there's a 20, 20 feet setback requirement. There's an existing .35 foot encroachment, and they propose to continue that. Beach Avenue has a 20-foot setback requirement. 5.7 feet is existing, and 5.7 feet is proposed. The rear yard setback is 25 feet. Zero foot is proposed to that. The side yard setback has a six-foot requirement where zero feet is being proposed. The side is, the lot is also, doesn't conform with regards to lot width. And lot frontage, 80 feet are the requirements. Lot width is 46.15 feet. Lot frontage is 51.81 feet. And the lot coverage is existing, 80% is the maximum permitted, 92.7% exists, and 92.7% is proposed. Now, parking. I thought I heard, so my question, the question marks that I have in my zoning table on page four is because I was concerned that this additional use may increase the number of employees. So the parking analysis for the additional 12 rooms is simple. There's 12 rooms, there's 12 additional parking spaces that are required. There's no existing, so all of the existing use that's there for the, all these seats and et cetera, that's an existing non-conforming use. It's not parked now. So this additional use creates a deficiency of 12 onsite parking spaces, plus any employees. So I would just, I want to ask a direct question. This additional use does not require any additional onsite employees?
No.
Okay, so the cross-training of additional employees and, and, you know, your hostesses is be able to check people in, your cleaning staff for the restaurant is going to be able to clean the rooms, so there's no additional employees?
No.
So in that case, I don't think there's any additional employee parking spaces that are required, so I think this is an additional deficiency of 12 parking spaces for the permitted use. There's at least a deficient, existing deficiency of 77, 78 spaces, plus the, whatever existing employees are there. So that's, that's the parking analysis. Signage, we talked a little bit about this. So the number of signs is not regulated. It says you're not limited, you can have one or more. However, the, the total amount of signage can't exceed 20 square feet. They're asking for just this use, they're asking for 60 square feet for the hotel use in addition to whatever's already on the, on the building. And I don't know what that is, because that wasn't provided on the plans. Okay, so there's a variance necessary for that. Okay. So that highlights all of the variances, I think. I think we got them all. There's 10 listed on page five of eight. I think I talked about all of those or summarized those. So on page seven of eight, I'll review, go into my general review comments. I've asked them to revise the zoning table to reflect the review comments in the review memorandum. Two is the stormwater review. We just want to ensure that the additions are not going to shed water on any adjoining properties, and if they do, then we would require a grading and drainage plan to be approved by the zoning board engineer. This is not considered major development, so it doesn't trigger any stormwater requirements in accordance with the city codes, but we always like to affix that condition to any projects to ensure that there's no negative impacts to neighbors. Three is the notes should be revised to indicate the parking calculations in accordance with the code. Once again, we had to sort of sort through that and ask a lot of questions to get to that status, but all of that should be provided on the final plan. Four is our standard condition that we request, excuse me. Sip of water, time, hold on. It's my allergy season. Apologize. Okay, so the sidewalk adjacent to the subject site will be replaced to the satisfaction of the board engineer. That is something that we ask all applicants to provide. Okay. Five, we talked a little bit about this. So there's a proposed service ramp and emergency egress improvements are proposed within the Decatur Street right-of-way, which is a city-owned right-of-way. So the applicant must secure a license agreement from the city for the proposed improvements within the right-of-way. Sidewalk and ramp construction details should be provided on the plan, and proposed improvements should be noted on the plan. I would also like to add into that, because your testimony really didn't accommodate or alleviate my question, but there is an existing loading zone that's right there in front of that proposed egress access door on the Decatur Street. Is that, is that the loading zone you currently use for your operation, your restaurant operation?
Yes.
Okay. What happens if someone comes and parks there? Like, this is, these are some of my questions, like, okay, say if you can't, you didn't park in the, in the Bank Street lot, and someone came directly to drop off their luggage?
Uh huh. So we have a loading in the front of the building as well?
Okay.
So not just on the side?
Okay. So one of the, one of the negative impacts is, are patrons going to be coming there dropping off luggage? How does this golf cart concierge, where does that golf cart originate from? How are they notified that someone's there looking for pickup? Like, these are the kind of questions I have that I don't think you've answered.
Yeah, sure. So, so similar to what we have going on right now at Buttonwood, right? So like I said, in the mornings, we send out check-in instructions to all the people that are checking in. For, for them, you know, they could check in anytime after 3 o'clock, right? What we had proposed for here is that if you, if you're interested in checking in and using one of our parking spots, you would send a message, or we would send you check-in instructions that states the address on where to park at. We will come pick you up at the Bank Street parking lot and take you down to the hotel. Now, if you want to go and drop off luggage at the hotel, you're more than welcome to do that. We'll have a spot to put luggage in the.
Is the loading zone being used to offload luggage from the golf cart or any other vehicles? Like, what, how's that working?
In the front or in the side?
You tell me.
Yes, so in the front, in the front of the, in the front of the building, we would unload luggage for our guests if they were interested in unloading luggage before parking.
Is there, is there a loading and unloading zone?
I thought there were parking spots.
Yes.
There is.
There is.
There's a loading and unloading at the front?
Yes.
On your side of the street or the other side?
No, on our side. Yeah, it's where Icona brings in their, you know, trucks, or the jitney always park, you know, unloads people there.
You're saying there's a loading zone on?
Beach.
On Beach Avenue as well as Decatur Street?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. You only show the one on Decatur on, on the plan.
Okay. So, like, just like the jitney or Icono always, you know, there's, there's a, a spot before the parking spots start where they unload people.
Okay. Where, where is this?
It's a designated loading zone.
There's one on Decatur Street.
On Beach Drive. On Beach Avenue.
I, I can't answer that question. I don't, I'm not sure.
They're parking spots.
All American meters, aren't they?
Do you know?
What's that?
Do you know if it's a dedicated, in front of your building? Is it a loading zone with a sign?
I don't think so.
You don't know for sure?
I don't know, I don't know for sure.
Okay.
I don't think it's dedicated, and if it's not dedicated, it'd become a traffic issue if people are still in there and parking.
Yes. Mrs. Bond.
We do not show any loading zone on Beach Avenue on our drawings. We could provide clarification depending upon how this turns out tonight regarding the parking, and we can identify any loading zones on our drawings and more of a clear explanation if agreed upon as to what the parking agreements would be and the loading for that. I think that how they currently operate a lot of their system, their hotel systems now, a lot of people do check in directly themselves. So our new entry, well, it's an existing entry, that center door next-
Lobby.
The, the new protected lobby area that has a service elevator, that's really the entrance that they're going to be using if they're checking themselves indirectly, they're going to go right into there. And that's why we tried to centralize our signage on that entry, because they're going to want to take their luggage up the elevator. That elevator will take them, it services the first, second, and third floors because we do have structural limitations with the fourth. And it does provide the ADA accessibility for the restaurant and also all the third-floor amenities for the hotel. Each guest, can you push the, the plan up real quick? I just wanted to point something out, the architectural plan.
Bring your mic, please. Thank you.
Sorry about that. On the second floor, when they land in this lobby area, this door is going to also be a keyed door, a keypad door, so not anybody can just go up to the hotel units. You'll get, they'll get the code from Ross, and with all of these technologies, everything's keypad. So they'll get through here, go up to the upper levels, and then they'll be able to key access each one of their rooms. But they will also have, if they're not comfortable checking in themselves at the maitre d' station on the first floor, this side of that front entry desk that was shown in the other elevation is where they would get their service for the hotel guests only, and the restaurant would be along this counter.
Based, based on Google Street Maps, there is not a loading zone in front on Bee, on Beach Drive. It is a no-parking zone that's striped, it's not intended to ever be parked and anything, it's a, it's a slight safety issue there, that's, it's, it's striped with yellow lines so that no one can park there. So you're not permitted to do any drop-off loading, et cetera. I know that it may occur, whatever, I'm sure that plenty of, your, your neighbors use that area too because there's nothing else in that vicinity, but-
Sure. So, yeah, I was just saying, I was giving examples like with, you know, the jitney and Icono, you know, they, they do all their drop-offs, but, you know, we, you know, for the check-ins, we could do, you know, where our designated loading zone is, which is on the side of the building.
Right. All your operations should be on Decatur and not on Beach Avenue.
And, and we would certainly agree to limit that in terms of a condition of approval.
How many of these golf carts, are they yours personally, or how's that working?
No, they're owned through the business.
What, what if five people show up in the parking lot on Bank Street need to be picked up?
It, it seats five, yeah.
You have five golf carts that can go there?
Oh, five people at one time?
Five different rooms.
Are checking in at one time?
Right.
Okay, so we have two going around? I mean, if five showed up at one time, we would try to, you know, schedule, you know, in between. We, we, I guess we haven't had that issue, you know, with people calling, like, our golf cart service that frequently.
Where do the golf carts originate from? Where do they park?
At one of our properties.
Which property?
So we have Buttonwood.
I'm sorry?
The Buttonwood.
Okay.
So we have them charging there.
Okay.
Yeah, we're sticking with the west people, right?
Uh, yes.
It just seems like you could have five golf carts trying to unload in this one small spot at the same time. You're not going to leave-
Well, we don't have five golf carts, so we wouldn't have five unloading at one time.
It's so difficult to get around the city, and especially in the summer. Are people going to just stand in, in Bank Street waiting to be picked up?
So we have other hotels on the island that do what we're doing but have a much larger facility. If they haven't had the, these kind of issues, I don't think we should, we would.
Now, I know sometimes Bank Street flies. Is there any issues that you're going to be dealing with there?
Uh, where the parking spots are?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't, I don't know.
If there's no more questions, I'm just going to keep continuing through my review, and then-
Craig, I also have a question about your review.
Can I finish and then we'll, we'll-
I didn't know if you were-
I'll take questions at the end? Okay. So I think I left off at item number five, I'll move to six. So as a condition of approval, the applicant shall submit plans to the superintendent of streets and roads for review and comply with any requirements for improvements within the city right-of-way. Seven, so we've asked for the existing signage to be identified and indicated on the plans and provide the area of that existing signage, as we have documentation of exactly how much, how many square feet of signage is proposed and existing. Eight is our standard condition that they have to provide the inspection escrow and tie the certificate of occupancy or acceptance of improvements to acceptable certification of those improvements. Nine is our standard condition that they have furnished a required performance guarantee and inspection escrow for site plans. Ten is our recommendation that they comply with the requirements of the Cape May Shetree Commission, Fire Department, Environmental Commission, and Public Works Department. We did receive copies of the Fire Department, which recommended approval with the following condition, that need to see and approve the fire suppression and egress plans. That should be a condition of approval. Public Works had no comment at the time. Shetree Commission approved, and we didn't get any copies of any other reports. Number 11 is standard condition that they have to comply with all other necessary state, county, local approvals. Beach Avenue is a county right-of-way. Cape May County Planning Department is required. The project is located within the historic district, so final HPC approval is required. 14 is our standard condition that they're required to comply with any and all applicable affordable housing requirements at the time of approval, issuance of building permits or certificate of occupancy as applicable. And then finally, should the board grant approval, the applicant is required to revise the plans to address all conditions of approval and submit six sets of compliance plans to the board engineer for review. So that's a summary of my report. Now I'll be happy to answer any questions the board has.
I actually have a, I guess, a question or clarification on number three of your review comments for variances. Craig, you said, minimum lot size per hotel unit required is 600 square feet for hotel motel. The, the subject parcel has a lot size of 5,400 square feet. The applicant has proposed a new use consists of 12 units. A lot area of 456 square feet per unit is proposed where 600 is required. So they need a variance for that. Now, if they only proposed nine rooms, it would be, according to my calculation, 608 square feet, so they wouldn't need a variance for that? Would that be correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So based on the lot size, the lot, you know, and the ordinance requirements, that's, that's the more appropriate-
Yes.
Unit, unit count.
Craig, on that same question, it says 456 square feet per, I can't find it right now, but I thought there were some that were like 300 square feet. Is that correct?
No, you're not, you're looking at room size.
Okay.
That's not what this is. This, this, this takes, there's, so there's an overall lot size requirement. Like, if you're going to have this type of use, you need a lot that's 10,000 square feet. Now, there's also a unit si, uh, a lot size per unit, which essentially establishes sort of like a density for the number of hotel rooms. Okay? So that's, that's what they need the variance from. So it's theoretically too dense for the size of the lot.
Does that change anything?
There were 15, that's the work, according to Ross.
So those standards are only for hotel motels, like, so you're adding in the second use with that. That's really not, so yes, it, you're hitting on the fact that the types of uses that are there versus the lot size requirement is that this existing lot size is very undersized for the, what's going on on the lot.
Okay. And I'm just going to repeat myself just for clarification. So you're saying if there was no restaurant, and they wanted to put in 12 on those two floors, it still would not be conforming, correct?
Correct.
Still would not be what?
Conforming.
Why not?
Thank you.
Based on the lot size. This is a total, this is a lot size discussion only.
Right.
Okay? And that's, this is strictly with what the bulk requirements say.
It doesn't mean though that the property does, it's just lot size, right, Craig? It doesn't mean that the property's not well-suited for what we're talking about. That's different-
You've given testimony towards that.
Correct.
And then, so, and I just caution you, like, so I look at the detriment, what, what's the detriment to this, the additional use? You can't park it.
Correct.
And I, and I think the board picks up on this, like, those are your hurdles, the use and the, and the parking variance. You know, the other ones-
Well, I think Christina-
In the hierarchy of things are down on the list.
I think Christina can address a, a couple of the issues you raised, the, the vertical explanation of three and four.
Right.
And how that impacts the exterior of the building. And also, we, she can talk a little bit about this rooms and how many rooms were there originally in the building. I think you have some information on that perhaps.
Yes. So regarding the vertical comment to everyone-
Speaking of-
I'm raising a question, but I don't vote.
Yeah, you can address it to everyone, please.
Regarding the, the vertical addition of the two floors, we're adding about 1,017 square feet on the third floor and the fourth floor, which is really required for the secondary means of egress. We weren't going to bump out anymore. Our original concept for this, we tried to have our secondary means of egress exit out onto the alley, and we tried to negotiate an agreement with the neighboring property. Due to liability reasons, they didn't want to agree to that, so we had to come back and redesign. And then we had a, we have a certain amount of distance that we have to have between both stairs, or else they'd be right next to each other, egressing into the same location. They have to have some type of separation from one another in the event of a fire. So the secondary means of egress that exits onto Decatur, we had to push it back, which means we had to have that addition. And I believe it's dimensioned on our SK2 drawing in your package. I don't have it printed here. Don't know the exact width of it offhand, but it's not an excessive amount of space that we're bumping out, but it is along the full back to try to keep consistent with our roof lines and not have anything weird going on in that area. Now, currently, it is overloaded with little strange additions of stairs and roof angles and rooftop equipment. So it's going to clean all of that visual up right now, because while it is slightly open at the moment, it is, there's large equipment all throughout the roof, and it's not in the best-looking condition.
I'd like to comment also on the fact that the expansion of the 1,000 square feet that was discussed, that Craig alluded to, it is along Decatur, which is open to the street, and it does not impede on the airspace of any other property directly. There's a, a parking lot across the way, and the entire expanse of depth of this property makes a sufficient distance from the next adjacent property that it does not negatively impact the airspace of any other property.
And then regarding the, the density, so to speak, the original hotel was on the second, third, and fourth floors. I don't have the exact number of rooms. I believe, Ross, did you find information?
Seven.
It was about 15 rooms total in the original hotel?
How many restaurant seats do they have?
I'm sorry?
How many restaurant seats do they have originally?
I'm not sure on the first floor what they-
But that doesn't affect, I mean, the restaurant is in a, you know, these were all pre-existing conditions before, and we've gone back with rooms that are slightly larger than the original hotel. Of course, it's a different age, different era. Modern zoning standards weren't applicable then, and we're also trying to restore a property to original use that has a quaint, use-appropriate, appropriate for the mission of the, of a historic city. So I think those things have to be considered, not just sterilely through the lens of modern zoning ordinances.
Also, while our occupant load is higher, around 299, I believe you said, our, we've limited our seats on the restaurant lounge expansion to 121 seats. So we're not going to be up at our maximum occupancy for the restaurant on the second floor at all, we don't believe, ever, because we don't have the seats for it. You know, we're only, we're limited to 121, what we show on our drawing concept here.
So that's why, can I ask you, with that egress, are you taking away seating?
No, we're not taking away any seating. We're just having less occupants. You know, we're, we're allowed per code and the square footage is for the areas. Per the calculation, we're allowed on the second floor 183 occupants, but we're only showing 121 seats.
But with that 183, was that before you put in that second egress?
That was just the area occupants. We need that second egress regardless.
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, by putting in that second egress, is that the seating that you're taking away?
Is it the seating we're taking away? No. No. Because we, it's kind of, we took, we, that, we added it in the existing kitchen area. They're not using the second floor kitchen, and they really just use it as a prep, so we've reduced that area, and we've taken that area on the second floor for the stair, and then we've gone up. Because what we didn't want to do with our stairs, even the new stair from the second floor that goes up, I say the new stair, the primary stair in the center and on the end in the kitchen, we didn't want to mess with the integrity of the original structure, so we wanted to push it behind. So we were just pushing it behind, going straight up, so we don't have to cut through those existing floor joists or anything like that, because it is very old construction.
It's a functional-
We really don't want to get too messy with that.
So that second egress, is that a new structure coming out the back?
Yes.
Yes, on the third and fourth, third and fourth floor.
Okay, so that'll be enclosed egress-
All the way up.
Right.
So, okay, because I guess I wasn't understanding that there was actually going to be an enclosed new addition put on.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, yes, there is. So there's an addition, yes. So, and, I don't, I should have printed the side.
That's where I was asking, is there going to be seating?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I missed that. So-
The diagram shows it here. This is the extent.
So the extent of the new addition is 22 feet, two and a quarter inches. So it's this area here that goes all the way up. And actually, along Decatur, it's, it's 31 feet in width here. So this is the line of your existing building where it ends, and then we were adding this, this little L here. And then, as you can see, this is where our egress is in our egress. And really, within that addition space, we just took advantage of having it here, so we added one room here and one room here. So we get four extra rooms because we have to have it for our stair to work.
Okay, so with the addition you're putting on-
With the addition, you're putting on more rooms?
Yes, but only because we have the space to do so within that area. Now, currently, the existing stair that goes up, so this, the existing stair is within this zone right here, but it's very narrow, so it's not compliant. And we're bringing that up to complacency. We're replacing that stair, we're putting in a whole new vestibule, and we're replacing all of this yellow, all is all new egress, and that's our egress in and our egress out. So our ingress and egress.
And I'd like to stress-
So this is fully rated lobby area as well as this. So this egress is also on the second floor. We're taking advantage of this existing stair that comes down into the kitchen area and currently has an existing door that exits onto Decatur. So we're using those existing openings without, you know, we don't want to impede the historic structure too much, but we're, we're trying to work with what we have. And we need to have the ramp because there's the height elevation between the sidewalk and the ramp. And we're pushing traffic, when we come out, we're landing here, and we're pushing the traffic out this way. So really, it's not pushing it towards the, the loading and busy end of that street. We kind of want people to come out and, and go where they need to go. And it's mainly for egress that we're ingressing here at the front of Beach Avenue.
And also, as Christina mentioned, it's sort of a functional necessity that we, we can't disrupt all of the old four-story structure of the existing building. So this is added to the back so that it doesn't have that kind of disruptive nature, and it gives us the egress that we need. There's a space available to, to us to get the extra two rooms on each level that just makes sense for the, you know, for the applicant. So it's sort of necessitated by the, the egress code requirements, and we of course wanna make it as, you know-
And I will say, during the design process of this, I looked at this stair in several different locations without really, every other location falls within the middle of the restaurant below, and it would just disrupt the business entirely on the first floor, and it would just really, I mean, that, this line, it's this line that's the second floor, right? This is, this is the line of this, the existing exterior building above. So there's nowhere to put it in this zone, and without putting it here and exiting onto Beach Avenue, there, you just can't go out these doors. And we weren't allowed permission, we tried to negotiate for months with the applicant, the owner of this building to try to, we were trying to egress out here, and we were gonna redo the complete alley, make it completely accessible, they just, they wouldn't hear it because of liability purposes.
Christina, that, as you're saying that, I think that's such an important point for everyone to consider, because we did try extremely hard. We, we really came right up against a brick wall, no pun intended. We had a brick wall that we could not get any movement from our discussions with the adjacent. I, I tried very, in fact, long and arduous to do that. And when that happened, because originally our plans, as you could tell the board, Christina, they, that was going to be our access out on the alleyway, correct?
Correct.
So when that fell through, or was not available, you had to redesign. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And this is the redesign that you came up with?
Correct.
Okay, cause we need a second emergency exit, right?
Yes, and I believe that's why this, the third and fourth floors aren't operational now, and it's a shame, because half of this building is not able to be used, because it's not code compliant. It has no means of egress, sorry, it has no means of egress, and it just cannot be used. And we're just trying to bring life back to the entire building and make it viable for Cape May as well as owner.
Can I just have another clarification question? So the addition is going on top of the first floor, or second floor, going up two floors, the addition?
Right, correct. And currently, I believe, it already-
That second floor kitchen is already all the way to the back.
The second floor kitchen already has like a, a little bump out here, but we're redoing it.
Yeah, utilizing it.
And making it look like the rest of Decatur, the Decatur Street elevation. It, it really looks seamless, we were able to tie in a roof line, everything was-
I guess my question for Craig is, Craig, what does that, cause I didn't realize there was an actual addition going on. So where does that fall in their variances?
So that's the C variances that I mentioned with regards to front yard setback, that expansion.
But I guess, since they're already existing, that's why I wasn't understanding what-
See, if you look at-
Cause they're going on top of it, that's why it's-
So I looked at, I thought Plan Sheet S K one does a really good job of showing like where it is. So if you look Sheet S K one, in the top left corner, there's four, three and four proposed architectural layouts, and they actually show you the, underneath the dimension it says extent of new addition, extent of new addition. It highlights where those additions are.
So we were, we approached it that this was a continuation of an existing non-conformity, because the first floor is built all the way out, the second floor is built out to an extent. You know, we're right up to that line, we were just taking it and going up to get our egress work.
It's a vertical expansion.
It's a vertical expansion.
But it is in the setbacks. So that's, that's why the C variances are-
Thank you.
So on your, on your page five, Craig, where you have the ten variances-
Yes.
What numbers of those variances are impacted by the vertical expansion?
So that would be number five, number six, and seven.
Thank you.
I just clarify, as part of my review, there was an error on the listing of the applicant's application form for the block, and I carried that error into my review. It is Block ten forty-one, not Block fourteen oh-one. I think the numbers were transcribed, but just, that's reflected in some of their application. I just wanted to clarify that for the board.
Thank you. Oh yeah, it was corrected. It was corrected, okay.
Madam Chair, if I may, one of the, your question earlier was an excellent question about what happens if five people show up at, at one time. So I was suggesting, talking it over with Christina, and the suggestion to the applicant is that they agree to stagger the check-in as a, as it could be a condition of approval, it's not a problem, but he could do that to avoid that problem. So you don't have five people showing up. His testimony is his experience from his other hotel properties, that doesn't happen, but certainly, it's an eventuality that could happen. We'll, we would like to deal, to deal with it and make sure that they are staggered.
Which seems like a good idea, except with people showing up, traffic, different things, it's, may not be possible to stagger. If someone runs into an accident, heavy traffic, so it doesn't really practically work.
Well, Ross, would that prac, I, I don't know, that may, may practically work. It may have exceptions, but we, you know, we design for the, for the majority of time that people follow what they agree to do, or else we have anarchy, we have chaos. So I think we try to assume that they're, they're gonna follow, and I think his experience, you can, you can enlighten the board, your experience with that.
Yeah, so we, we, this typically wouldn't happen, even with some of our bigger places. Now, if it was like a hundred-room hotel, you know, I'm sure you'll have those issues, right? With something that's twelve rooms, for people to show up at the exact minute, at the exact time, I think, you know, I think, I think that would like be really rare. But, you know, if they ultimately have to sit in the parking lot because they're late on their arrival time, I mean, that should be put on the guest, I think, right?
And how did we resolve if somebody wants to come up on Beach Drive and pulls up when there isn't any?
So with Corliss, Craig Corliss's suggestion, we would continue to use the loading area that we have on Decatur, so everything will be done on Decatur.
Right, and that, that certainly, Madam Chair, could be a condition also of the approval, that all offloading would be on that Decatur Avenue side.
But that loading zone is not just for your restaurant, right? It's for the other restaurants?
Who's that for?
There's only one restaurant.
There's only one, that's the only property on the corner.
Well, isn't there a pizza place next to you?
No, they have a different loading zone, it's in the back. There's a driveway that goes back.
Do you have a guarantee, once you get your twelve parking spaces at Bank Street, that they will be available every year? Or is it just only yearly?
So they offered me first right to renew on all twelve spots.
All twelve spots?
Yes.
Is there anything that is put into approval, that they have to continue to get those twelve spots?
That should be a condition of approval.
Why I'm saying that is, cause it's my understanding that in the past, we have approved other requirements for parking, and then they just stopped doing it.
Yeah. No, it should be perpetual. I mean, if that, or-
We don't have a problem with that.
They're trying to justify their parking variance and their use variance based on the providing of those twelve spaces, so that should run continuously with the operation of that hotel.
And we would have no problem with that. In other words, as a condition of approval, the applicant would certainly agree that if there was a diminution in parking space, we would have to find an alternative location. And if we don't, then whatever we lose, we would have to shut those rooms down, so we keep the ratio one to one. I have, I, I don't think the applicant has any problem with that.
I guess his question's for Craig. I see we do the fire chief, we have Public Works. Do we require anything with water and sewer, since they're putting in twelve new bathrooms, that require?
I do, I believe they do a cursory review when they submit building plans, but not at this level. We don't see it, it's not a zoning issue for us.
Okay, I just was curious.
Does anyone have any more questions for Craig, or? Yes. Okay, so at this time, we'll open it to the public, anyone within two hundred feet. Sir, if you can go up to the podium, turn on the microphone. State your name and address.
My name is Eric Gaver. I live at five four nine New England Road, it's lower township, but it's Cape May Postal. I'm the owner of an adjoining property on Decatur Street to the rear of the building that you're reviewing.
So are we need to swear you in?
Certainly.
Can you spell your last name, please?
G A V as in Victor E R.
Thank you.
Do you swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
I apologize for probably rambling a little bit. I have quite a few particular questions. I can tell you that generally speaking, I'm here to object to the application. I believe it impacts my property, I believe it impacts the neighborhood and the public good, and I think it's contrary to the intent of the zoning ordinance. First question, and I apologize that did not thoroughly review in detail all the plans that have been referred to. I'm sorry. I have a question for, I guess, the applicant, the architect, whomever. Your outward expansion to the, toward the mall, away from, at the back of the building, how close will that come to that, I guess it would be a rear property line? Which is where the first floor of the building ends?
That's exist, that's, yeah, that's existing. Right now, it's-
Right now, the existing building goes, as I think we said, to the property line.
Yes, but on the second floor, the existing building is set back thirteen feet, four and a half inches, that's existing on the second floor.
Right.
To the end of the kitchen on the second floor.
So we're-
We're not going past that at all, we're actually coming in-
So you're just, you're going up, above-
Further in than that, so it's-
So you're not coming, other than the existing first floor, nothing would be coming closer to my property-
Correct.
-that currently exists?
It's approximately thirty-
Okay, so it'd be the same distance away, just a little more elevation, another-
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
It's approximately thirty-two feet away from the back of the current building.
Okay. Another unrelated question. I didn't, wasn't able to pick up from trying to look at the plans, where the new side entrance would be on Decatur Street. Currently, there is a, a side door there that the, really accesses the kitchen area and the trash area. With regard to that door, where are you talking about?
That's where it's gonna be.
Same location.
Correct, same location, and we've created a vestibule within that, the interior of that space to separate it from the kitchen and the trash area, so-
Do you have on your plans the dimensions, size, and location of the new ramp you're talking about?
It's got a landing of eight feet by five feet, and a ramp of one feet by five-
Sorry, I didn't hear that. There was noise.
Ramp is eleven feet by five feet wide, and has a landing of eight feet by five feet wide.
Has the slope ratio required.
Yes, and it goes toward Beach Avenue.
There'll be railings.
Yes.
Okay, cause currently, there's just a very small, little-
Yeah, it's a-
-ramp, but almost like a forty-five, sticks out-
Right, we're, we're trying to remedy that.
Sticks would stick out into the public sidewalk by five feet?
Yes.
And I assume that to honor the, the slope ratio required for handicap, it would be how long?
Well, it's currently eleven feet.
And that would be running parallel to-
Parallel to Decatur.
Okay. Okay. Where are you gonna put your trash cans?
He currently has an interior trash room.
Were you at the property today, sir?
Us, no, we were not.
No, no. Well, my testimony to the board is, it's very common that for a good part of every day, when the restaurant is open, there are numerous of their trash cans that, as she said, are inside the building, that are outside the building, lined up against the building on the public sidewalk. This morning, or this morning and this afternoon, I was at my property for one of those, be there from ten till four, in fact, it was a, a vector was inspecting my centrally monitored fire alarm system, I had to wait for them. So I counted, you had eleven very large, not just trash cans, the big dumpster style that get picked up and go into the back of the trash truck, you had eleven of them lined up on the public sidewalk. Now, if that's where you're gonna put your ramp, which would be, whatever you said, five by something, with a railing sticking up, how are you gonna handle that? How are you gonna handle your trash?
Yeah, just a couple of things. It's, it's not true that we have our trash bins out all day, every day.
So I'll show you pictures, and there's time involved on my camera, okay?
So we have-
You really want me to?
One trash day where they come and pick up the trash, and we have one recycle day. So that's simply not true. We plan on moving, sliding everything down, with the exception of the ramp that, that would be there.
Which way is the ramp slope heading?
Slop's toward the beach.
Towards the beach? Okay. You mentioned, and again, I'm jumping around, just picking up, trying to remember the things you said that caught my attention, that you're going to be redoing a lot of your, and basically it's probably your HVAC, that's, so, as you referred to it, and it, you know, it's a mess up there.
Yeah.
How are you gonna access that?
Access the roof?
Yeah. Currently, and my testimony is currently, and for quite a while prior to your ownership even, the owner of that, that building, your building, considers my parking lot to be part of your property. And they leave equipment in my parking lot, which is not a problem to me in the winter, but in the summer, due to rentals that I have, it take, it blocks my tenants from their onsite parking with equipment, ladders, this, that, what have you. So how are you gonna access that roof?
I, I could tell you right now-
You have access from the interior of the building out?
Right, we don't show it on this plan, but actually, you can come here, and I can point out to you, we'll be able to provide second floor access onto the roof with a man door, so that that kind of occurrence doesn't affect you any longer.
I assume, I don't know for sure, will there be additional HVAC type or mechanical type equipment there due to the new rooms?
There will be new equipment, a lot of what's there will be removed. You can see that large ductwork that's all over the place, not really very well organized. A lot of that's gonna be replaced.
Are you gonna have any sound suppression around it for, to keep the noise from going directly to the neighbors?
Yeah.
Since you're too close to the property line with this equipment?
We will be back from the edge of the parapets to legal distance, and we'll do everything we need to try to satisfy that you're not disturbed. I mean, we can, modern equipment has, you know, a little improved sound control. Some of these systems are gonna be mini-split systems, so that you're not gonna have a lot of the fan noise, you're gonna have just some of the condensers out there, but they're gonna be much more efficient, and-
But there'll be more of them.
No.
And they'll, well-
But first of all, the design's not complete for mechanicals.
And they'll be a little closer to, for farther away from Beach Avenue, cause you've got an addition going in.
Well, we're going to have them efficiently located for access to the units, but the intent, we know that it's a mess up there currently, and we wanna improve that condition. And I think that ultimately, you're gonna find that it's a great improvement regarding any noise and visual distraction that you're currently experiencing.
Okay, and I'm, again, I'm sorry, jumping around a little bit. This would be more testimony than cross-examination. Regarding the loading zone on Decatur Street, I have owned my building for probably close to forty years, so I'm very familiar with the usage pattern. I can tell you that it is not an exclusive loading, an unloading zone for their property. It's used by multiple commercial uses, including almost to, close to an equal extent carnies. Inland from my building, which is a two-story red brick building, you might be able to- Inland from my building, which is a two-story red brick building, you might be able to visualize it, inland, there is an alleyway that goes in, and it leads to carnies, and the rear of the building is between Cabalito and carnies. Some of the carnies delivery trucks try to make it down that alleyway, but it's a little narrow, it's a little tough, and there are a lot of other users of that alley. I wouldn't say quite equal, but darn close, usage by delivery trucks going to carnies as compared to Cabalito. It is very common, starting at eight in the morning, and sometimes earlier than that, and going through most of the day, that there are multiple delivery trucks, and they're very large, as we know. Very typically, that loading zone will be occupied a good part of the day, off and on. They, the trucks get backed up. I can't tell you how many times I'm blocked from getting into my parking lot by a truck who can't get in the load-on-load zone because it's occupied, thus and so. So, I think you've been given a little bit of a rosy picture of that load-on-load zone and its potential use, especially for hotel residents being dropped off, et cetera. Now, in terms of zoning, I wanna digress a little bit. The city parking requirement, historically, and how it's evolved over time, is very interesting. In the, well, of course, in the old, old days, there was no such thing as a zoning law to begin with. But definitely in the sixties, seventies, and I don't, maybe into the early eighties, for that zone, property owners were allowed to count metered parking within five hundred feet in any direction toward their onsite parking requirement. The city obviously saw the beginnings of what we're still dealing with, which is a massive parking problem throughout Cape May. So, they amended that, that ordinance provision and changed it to being able to count metered parking within two hundred feet of a property toward your onsite requirement. Obviously, I say, my own opinion is, that the logic of that type of a provision, counting metered parking off property, was that it was a commercial district and sort of common patronage from somebody parking and going to multiple different places, retail stores, walking around, what have you. And then parking became much more limited. So, they went from five hundred down to two hundred, then they said, no, you gotta have it all onsite. So, that counting within two hundred feet was eliminated from the zoning ordinance. When? I don't know. You all are in City Hall, that the records are here. The interesting thing is that, obviously, uses that got into existed, existence, either prior to any zoning regulations, or back when you could count metered parking, were grandfathered when changes were made. And that, in theory, could, to some extent, apply to the building we're talking about. Though I do not remember usage in the upper three floors. I do remember the bar and restaurant that was on the first floor, and it was not as large as the first floor now. So, who knows what the parking requirement was in that era when the onsite parking requirement, right up in the use of metered spaces, evolved. Clearly, to my mind, that evolution shows an awareness that onsite parking is really, really a drastic issue. Problematic. But the city did not get rid of the requirement. In some towns, some areas, there is no onsite parking requirement in like a central core commercial district. But Cape May's always kept one. And you're being asked to allow rented spaces off-site toward parking spaces required not for an existing setup, but for something new that's being added. It, that, that is bothersome. I don't think that's within the intent of the ordinance, and I think that's a detriment that impacts all levels of this application. I debated whether I was even gonna come here tonight. I didn't wanna be a bad neighbor. I don't know these folks, though. But the more I thought about it, I said, you know, come on, kid. You know, you gotta protect your own also, so that's why I'm here. You're dealing with a complicated situation, and though it's, this isn't like Roe v. Wade being overturned, where there, some people thought there was legal precedent based on prior decisions. We know that zoning board decisions aren't like that. But on the other hand, your decisions do create a pattern, and they do create an expectation. If you think about how this set fact pattern could apply to other buildings, you would realize that that could be opening a can of worms. The thing that really surprised me tonight was the argument that leasing spaces remotely, and I'm holding aside the jitney and all that, you know, the electric transportation, but having leased spaces, where obviously, there's no long-term, there's no ownership involved, so that's a question mark into the future, would become a basis for, arguing for, at least, approving an application. And it also surprises me that leased spaces like that could be used for new uses, for in development that increases the onsite parking requirement. It was always my impression the city was trying to enlarge and increase its public parking in order to try to solve our existing problems. To have that public parking on a lease situation be utilized for an expansion that just increases the potential parking issues that we're dealing with blows my mind. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you very mu- oh, no, that, that's it. That's all I have to say. I was gonna cross-examine more, but you, some of you may know, I don't know hardly anybody here, but I'm a retired attorney, and I practiced zoning and planning law in this room for decades. So, it's very interesting to be back here for the first time eons. People ask me what I used to do, and I say, well, I'm a retired attorney, but actually, I call myself a reformed attorney. So, I won't get into the cross-examination, but please, ask them all the questions, because there's still a lot more around.
Thank you, Mr. Gaver. Anyone further away than two hundred feet that wish to speak?
Jules Roush, ten ten New York Avenue. May I ask a question, Craig?
Can we swear you in, sir?
Pardon me?
We need your address.
Ten ten New York Avenue.
Okay, and then we need to swear you in.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Do we have a requirement that there must be a five-foot-wide pedestrian walkway on sidewalks?
Do we have a requirement? I believe so. I mean, it's-
That-
Have to be consistent with ADA compliant.
That's my, my understanding. I don't, I don't believe the Decatur area will be five foot wide.
So, in this case, those improvements have to be, if the city is even willing to entertain it, they have to be approved by the city. And that, that's that licensing agreement that I mentioned. So, at that point, and obviously, just looking through some of these pictures and, you know, the Google Street and the, where the ramp is, the utility poles, there's some bollards out there. All of those things would have to be shown on the site plan. And that's one of the things I asked for in my general review comments, was to provide all of those improvements on the plan and show those with dimensions and everything. So, yes, they're gonna have to demonstrate that they can provide that.
My other comment deals with the, the parking area. That's a floodplain, then identified clearly as a floodplain. And proposing that as a use in perpetuity? I don't know that the city frankly has the authority to do that. That this complicates the fact that the tenant may, may not be able to be guaranteed the use of those spaces. I raise that as, as an issue. The other one is, since we're taking a change of use for the building and expanding it, it is within a proximity of the beach and may require a DEP application and approval. And I have a suggestion that I think it's important when you see an application like this, that any site plan approval that was previously granted to a particular property be part of and incorporated with this application. Because having two hundred and ninety-nine seats in a restaurant with no parking, I, I don't really understand whether that, in fact, is the case as an original site plan approval.
I could, I'd like to address a couple of those comments. The ramp that we have proposed on Decatur is not an ADA access ramp per se, so it could be a little narrower. We currently show a five-foot-wide ramp because of loading, and we have a residual width of the sidewalk at four foot eight. But we could certainly make that five-foot minimum to the public side, if that's so desired.
Well, I just wanna clarify, that four-point-seven, whatever you have there-
Yeah.
-that doesn't include that two-foot, that telephone pole that sticks out, and there's electrical things that also are in at least a foot.
I believe, I see some bollards there. But my, my point was, we can narrow that, the width of that ramp and landing down a bit to maintain the sixty-inch minimum public right-of-way for the sidewalk, if that's the pleasure of the planner and then the engineer. The utility pole is much further down, so it does not conflict with that. Here it is, right there.
I, I was, you know, I went, I go down that street. It's very close to that door. It actually goes in-
There's several doors, ma'am, and the ones that we're improving. There's the pole, there's the door that we're improving, and there's the landing. So, the, the utility pole will not conflict with that.
Well, I don't know if there's, I don't know if there's a scale, but when I went past it today, it's fairly close.
Well, this is to scale.
We, we could always ask the surveyor to make-
Yeah, and we'll, we'll confirm it.
Put the plan up on the board, so everyone can see what you're referring to.
No one's gonna see it, but-
Everyone's equally interested.
Madam Chairman, a comment that directly relates to what they're talking about.
What I'd like you to do is-
Information for the board.
...board members' question, and we address the issue of whether this can be revised.
Okay, so-
So that there's sufficient space on sidewalk.
The survey data that we currently have reflects the utility pole in this back corner. And there are several doors along this frontage, as you probably are aware. The one that we're improving is the one that's currently used for the trash loading. We're gonna modify it and replace it. And we had a landing at sixty inches projection and eight feet toward Decatur, and then a ramp down that extended about eleven feet, two inches. So, because this is not an ADA ramp that requires a sixty-inch turning radius, we'll be able to reduce that width, probably functionally down to forty-eight inches would be the most I would want to, because they still were gonna use it for loading. And that would give you almost, well, certainly over five feet, maybe almost five feet, eight clear on the public side. So, I think we could live with that, if that were the pleasure of the planner and the engineer.
If, if that's the scale, what is the telephone pole to that ramp, or the distance be?
I don't have a scale with me, but this is to scale.
But you're telling me now that it's fine, and that's why I was asking, because you're saying it's to scale.
It is to scale, ma'am.
And then I'm asking you, what is the difference between the, the pole and the ramp?
It's not dimensioned, though. I don't have that information, but it's, I can tell you just visually. It's, it's approximately at the corner, at the rear corner of the building. According to this, this is survey data. This is not our data, and that's where the utility pole is located. Now, there might be something else. We do have indication that there are several bollards out here that may, you know, have an impact. But we don't, from the information that I have currently, that's, that utility pole is not affected by the proposal.
To alleviate the board's concern, we can make it a condition of approval that the sidewalk has to be ADA compliant, and we'll, when they add the additional information that I asked for, we will make sure that it complies. Otherwise, we're gonna have to redesign it, or we won't sign off on the plans.
Recognize you, Mr. Gaver, but you did speak before, so very briefly.
Very briefly. Really, I guess it's really a question for the engineer. It dawned on me when you were talking about sidewalk width and ramp width and what sidewalk would be left, that there are some properties, including mine on Decatur Street, that the front of the building is encroached over the property line in the street right-of-way. So, when you, when you're looking at this question of remaining width of sidewalk, I don't know if their building is on the property line or comes over a little bit. I have an encroachment agreement that allows my building to be there. So, that's just something to think about when you're computing it.
Yeah, this, this board can grant approval for those improvements that encroach into the right-of-way. Only City Council can.
Right.
So, that's why we're making that, they're proposing it. We recognize that, but ultimately, they need a licensing agreement with the city.
I understand that, but I'm just here to figure out what sidewalk could be left based upon their current proposal that you're voting on. Make sure that you're going off of building location rather than property line, because the building could be toward the street from the property line. I have one question.
I'd just like to interject one thing, sir. There was a survey submitted as part of the application. I don't, I was trying to find it. I thought he had it on his plan. I don't believe that there was any encroachment shown. The building does go to the, to the, you know, fills the entire site.
I'm not saying it does. I'm just pointing out that that's common.
The plan shows a zero-point-three-five feet-
A very small slight.
So, along Decatur Street.
Zero-point-
And that's rather de minimis, so-
Five, four, five inches.
Correct.
That's about what I am, too, I think. I do have one question for the applicant, and then I will-
I have one question.
In fact, I have to go home. I have company at home. Was the city aware, when they signed their lease for the parking spaces, that the spaces were to be used for a proposed new use, not for an existing use?
I think Mr. Hammer could answer that. He dealt with the city.
Yes, I told them what the parking spots were for.
Okay. Well, that can be double-checked with the city. Thank you very much.
Madam Chairman, I'd just ask Mr. Gaver one question. You testified a lot about the parking off-site arrangements, and since you're so familiar with the Cape May ordinance, is there anything in the ordinance that says you can't park through a, a remote parking lot? Is there any restriction? Some ordinances, you know, do that. Does ours in Cape May?
I'm gonna sound like I'm, I don't know. And the reason I don't know is I haven't practiced zoning law in Cape May for fifteen years. So, I'm really not hands-on, familiar with the current zoning ordinance.
But you did testify-
Yes.
You did testify extensively-
What?
-to the background of it, and I'm only asking you is, today, is this board bound by a restriction-
I don't know.
-that they cannot consider off-site leased spaces from the city of Cape May?
I don't know. That would be for the board's listeners to-
I didn't even finish the question, but you don't know of any, right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Okay, so if there are no more questions? I'm sorry. Yes, I can. It's closed to the public? And- So, we need a motion to-
Well, I think we have to discuss the actual motion. I think Richard King's pattern and habit has always been that you vote on the use variance, and everything is subsumed within the use variance itself. You heard a lot of testimony, and there were some issues as to how many units you could actually put in there, into the building based upon the size of the, the lot itself. So, I think you have to sort of pragmatically discuss that actual motion itself, and there could be some sub-portion or- could be some sub portion or subsections to the motion, like, I think, one, you have to decide if you want to see the use as a hotel, and if you wanna see the use as a hotel, then you have to decide, is 12 units enough, too many? Then you have to decide whether or not the parking aspect of it meets the amount of units that you're going to agree to by way of the actual number of parking, or, excuse me, hotel units you wanna use, and then you have to talk about the signage aspect of it. But somewhere twisted in between all of that is this vertical expansion that Craig alluded to, that actually is expanding the third floor and fourth floor to be able to put more hotel units in, so.
No, to actually put a access, an emergency access, which doesn't really lend, I don't think Christina's testimony was, allowed a little more space.
It did, and we put rooms within that additional space, but it wasn't just for the secondary means of egress, it was to make the main egress to the second floor stair accessible as well, because right now there's a very narrow stair that doubles back all the way up, and it's very narrow, and without cutting through the existing floor joists, which are, you know, from the 1800s, it's a little bit, a lot. We proposed going right along the backside of the existing structure up with both of our new stairs, so we're not cutting into any of that existing, any of those existing framing members. We are going in new behind, so we don't jeopardize the integrity of the historic structure itself framework-wise. So, that's why we took that approach, and originally, it was only a small portion to get the one stair in, and we tried to work the secondary egress stair in the back, along the alleyway, within, like, further up behind the existing bar area on the first floor, but we could not come to an agreement with the owner of the adjacent property. So, we studied several, several different stair locations, and that's how we landed where we were. But it, the, the purpose of the expansion was never to get more rooms, that just happened because we had the space, because we were bumping out, we added them, if that's clarification at all. The intent was never, we want more rooms, let's do this. It was, we had to do it for egress purposes, and that was just something that came along with that additional space.
Yeah, but that said, you have to remember that this is a multimillion-dollar investment being proposed, and the applicant needs to have as much revenue, revenue as he can possibly get out of his investment, so I don't think it's unreasonable to, to consider that, you know, he has to do what he can to make this a viable project.
And then with inside of the actual motion, after the board tells me how they want the motion to be framed, you have conditions that you have to deal with. One is Craig's report, I think in issue 20 and 22 for the completeness review, that has to be a condition. This issue as it relates to the fire suppression system, that's a condition, that it's approved by the fire officials, that any type of encroachments that will exist as a result of this project would need an encroachment agreement, not issued by you, but by the city itself. There'd be no operations on, or operations will only occur on Decatur Street, and the sidewalk will be ADA compliant. And lastly, the, the parking issue itself, which was discussed on multiple occasions, and that is, in the event that this arrangement that exists between the city, and that is for the amount of parking spots, for some reason is eliminated in totality or in some kind of a reduction for the amount they have now for 12, that it would be an offset. So, if they take away two parking spots and they can't come into the board and show a replacement of the two parking spots, that two rooms would have to not be operated until such time that they provided the board with proof that they have two new adequate parking spaces, and whether or not you wanna include that as a condition. So, this has become rather complicated.
And Mr. Barnes, the applicant has no objection to any of the conditions that you've just recited at all. And also would add the staggering for Madam Chair, you know, to the extent that hopefully it works, the staggering, we would endeavor to stagger check-ins to avoid any, you know, thank you, to avoid congestion.
I defer to you, Madam Chair, as to how you wanna break this up. If you wanna just have one vote for what's being presented, then have at it, or do you wanna discuss among the board members whether or not you wanna vote on the use aspect of it first? Do you want to see the, the use be a hotel, and if you do that, then perhaps you move into how many units? Then the parking, and I think the rest of it, if you agree to the use, the vertical expansion aspects already, if you say yes to the use aspect of it, you're agreeing to the vertical expansion.
Right.
Mr. King likes to take it all at once, because even if, if we were to grant the sign variance and disapprove all the rest of it, they're not gonna be permitted to put the sign on.
Right.
It all is interrelated, so that's why Mr. King likes to take it all at once.
Well, if I, if I may, Madam Chair, speak to this. As Mr. Barnes knows, and I'm sure would advise you, there is a supermajority requirement for the D variances. There is only a majority requirement for the C variances. And that being said, I totally acknowledge and understand the conundrum, as a board attorney in several jurisdictions in, in South Jersey, I understand this is a conundrum that sometimes we face, but I think first is the use, and if the use fails, then the rest is not applicable. You see what I'm saying, like, in other words, in the C variances and the site plan waiver fall away, because obviously our, our second use has been denied. So, I think you were saying that, the discussion, but I think that's the motion, because how do you vote on a motion that's all together, the D variance and the C variances, when there's a different majority requirement?
I don't disagree with you, but this is a little bit more unique, because the use itself, the dual uses, I think that's the first question, do you wanna allow dual uses? And after you answer that question, then you have to say, well, how many of the hotel rooms do I want? Do I want 12 or nine, apparently was the number, I think, that you threw out, Craig, as to if you took the square footage?
Mr. Gaver, you told me.
Right, and then, then perhaps that then changes the parking arrangement aspect of it. So, I understand what Mr. King does, and I'm not, I'm not attempting to say, let's not do what King says. I'm offering you an alternative to what King does to see, because this is unique as to whether or not you wanna just vote all at once, or you wanna break 'em up slightly.
Well, I think you take the use variance first, and you may not have a discussion for the rest of it, or may, and then-
I just have a question about the parking, which was bought up by Mr. Rosh, is that Bank Street parking, people aren't aware it floods, and that people can't get in or out of there. So, when it floods, how's this parking gonna work?
It's not. It's flooded, it's not. I mean, you answered your question, but, you know.
So, no matter what, they need a parking variance, what they've offered you is an alternative to offset that variance by a parking arrangement that is at Bank Street, and the customers are accommodated through this golf cart system that the owner has. So, you need a parking variance, they've just given you reasons why you should grant the variance, because they've provided you with an alternative.
So, you would recommend that we do the D first?
I would recommend that you vote on the use aspect of it first, and whether or not you, you want the use to occur now. Having said that, only seven board members can vote, they need five affirmative votes to carry that motion, and based upon how you vote, it's important that you set forth your rationale, as I'm sure Mr. King has indicated to you before, and that is that you rely upon the special reasons as set forth in NJ SA 40:55D2, which they provided some in their testimony, as well as you deal with the negative criteria, and that is whether or not it will substantially detriment the public good and substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zoning scheme. And one of the biggest issues when you're dealing with these D1 variances is whether or not the site can accommodate the use, so you have to keep that in mind, and when you, when you discuss that, you have to talk, think about what exists in its entirety in the building, and, and as Mr. Hurley said, and the applicant has indicated, that the parking arrangement, because that's, that's really the key, the set-off here, and that is whether or not the site can accommodate not just the, the customers inside of the facility that they're using as a hotel, but actually where they park and how they park.
So, you would like, you would prefer that we do the D variance?
I, I think so. I don't see how you can do it otherwise, but I'd like, I'd like to request just a five-minute adjournment to talk to my client before we move forward.
Would you like to request what?
A five-minute adjournment to-
Wait, you both spoke at the same time.
No, I'd like to request, Madam Chair, just a slight adjournment for a few moments to talk to my client, if that's okay with Mr. Barnes and with you, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Okay, and the D variance, just for clarification, would be to permit the two uses, not the number of units, that would be the subsequent vote.
Right.
Right?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Can we just have a five-minute?
If everyone wants to turn their mics off, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, it's 8:27, so 8:32? Thank you.[1282.46]
Madam Chair, thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you, Board members, for that post- adjournment. Before you take your vote, if you don't mind, I'd like to just-
Let me just call back-
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
If we could, Madam Chair, just want to have Ross speak a little bit about the parking. It seems like that's certainly a large issue of concern, obviously in the city. And I think, Ross, you want to address that, some other properties that you're aware of and that-
Yeah, I mean, so, obviously, the parking is a concern, right? I think that is throughout Cape May. I think what we tried to do here is to alleviate that concern, right? We think about the nearest buildings to me, which would be the Carroll Villa, the Virginia, all the cottages across from the Virginia and the Carroll Villa. None of them have parking. And all of them are on off-site locations, right? I think we're in the same exact boat, and we have a third, maybe, a third of their rooms. Yeah, what does the Virginia have, maybe thirty rooms, right? So, that, I think, the alternative that we came up with is very similar to what they're doing now. You know, if there was, you know, something that was across the street, of course, that would be great for us. I guess, you know, my main purpose of even doing this building was to get it back to its original state and not to have, you know, two empty floors above this restaurant. So, you know, we understand that the parking is the issue, right? And I'm, I guess this was the best alternative. And now, with flooding on Bank Street, I mean, if the city is selling us spots that they know is, you know, a spot to be flooded, I mean, I, you know, how could I, you know?
I mean, it, I mean, it's a known fact. Matter of fact, the people that live on Bank Street know that they have to move their cars on high tide. And I think that's why the city puts in their disclaimer in here that said it's not guaranteed.
Okay.
Well, it's a condition of the environment. We stand on the document. The document is bona fide. It's a legitimate lease agreement with the city, and the city, as a government entity, has rented us those spaces. Obviously, I don't have a floodplain map, but I would venture to say most of the city's in a floodplain. And I think that we're trying to proffer a solution to a problem. You have a building that's historically been a hotel and a restaurant. Late, most recent years, just a restaurant, but we're trying to return to that original glory. And it is a very substantial investment. It's millions of dollars, so it's an increased ratable. The impact on, from the purpose of zoning, there's at least two or three purposes of zoning that have been put on the record that it serves. We could potentially discuss the number of units, but for the use, I'm speaking to the use. I think the use that we've suggested, or the two uses, satisfies the legal criteria for this board to grant a D1. And we will address, in Mr. Hurlis's report, we'll address the other conditions that Mr. Barnes indicated, and we'll reduce the number of rooms if we lose the parking spaces. So, I would hopefully, you know, would hope that that would satisfy the board, at least on the D variants, and we can deal with the C variances subsequently.
Sure, it'll be a motion to approve a D1 use variance to allow multiple uses. In this particular case, a restaurant and a hotel at the subject property. Along with any conditions that are specifically associated with the actual use that I expressed earlier. Excuse me? I mean, I can repeat them if you like.
Yes, I would.
Sure. That's to address Mr. Hurlis's report, Section 20 and 22, for the completeness review, as well as incorporate all of his comments, which the board agreed to. That a fire suppression system has to be properly installed and certified by the fire inspector. Any encroachments that exist as a result of any approvals have to be approved by city council. All operations, meaning loading, unloading, must occur on Decatur Avenue. The sidewalk must be ADA compliant. As for the parking, I don't necessarily know if we can discuss that parking aspect of the conditions until we actually get to the parking aspect of the variance, which is a C variance, which then goes hand-in-hand with the staggered check-in times. So I think if the use is approved, we're going to ultimately get to the parking. And I guess, in theory, you could deny the parking variance and the use is somewhat meaningless, because if you don't have the parking, then you can't have the use. But I guess let's get over the use hurdle first. Is that fair, Joel?
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Sheen, seconded by Ms. Hassel. Ms. Hassel?
No. I feel that your plans are not complete, that things came up that you didn't anticipate. And I'm just not satisfied that it's going to work.
Mr. Ledwin?
No.
Mrs. Notch?
No.
Ms. Sheen?
No, based on congestion.
Mr. Zexar?
No.
Mr. Venuto?
Uh, no.
Mrs. Werner?
No. I think that the whole package needs to be more, more complete and understandable about how this is going to work.
Thank you.
Oh, well. Let's see. I go, I go that way. I have my, all my health care is at Cooper. And so I go up there and I love the shop. And I love the whole food. I know, it's so funny. We were just there this weekend.
Understandable.
Okey-dokey. I mean, I like, I like the old couple. Yes. Long. But at least we've seen you before.
And it's been in the last fifteen years. Seat's still very hot.
Our next application is Nicholas Mitch, 240 Windsor Avenue. And would you like to introduce yourselves?
Yes, yes. Good evening, Madam Chair. Thank you, Board members. Ron Gelsounis appearing on behalf of Nick Mitch. He is the property owner sitting to my right. The property, of course, is 240 Windsor Avenue. This is a side-by-side structure, sharing a party wall with a mirror structure on the other side, to the west. The two sides are separately owned. It's not a condominium form of ownership. The applicant side, the east side of the building, consists of two units. It's a first-floor unit containing two bedrooms, and a second unit on the second and third floor containing four bedrooms. This is located in the R2 zone. The proposal this evening is to convert an existing rear roof into, into a deck for the second floor, second story, and to convert an existing roof area into a deck for the third floor area. This will include stairs internal to the deck to provide a second means of egress from the second and third, from the third floor. All of this will be constructed within the existing footprint of the building, but it will require variances, because this is a non-conforming structure and a non-conforming use in the zone. It's also a minor vertical intrusion into the rear and side yard setbacks, which result from the railings on the decks. So, to my right, of course, is Mr. Nick Mitch, and to my left is Lou Scheit. He's our engineer and municipal planner from Gibson and Associates. So if we could have, and also, I'm going to, I'm going to do something a little unusual. I'm going to take a witness out of turn, Mr. Ryan-
Can we see who is going to be speaking tonight, so we can swear?
It will be Mr. Lou Scheit, the applicant, Nick Mitch, and Ryan Davies, who's the next-door neighbor.
Okay. Would you like to-
Can you spell the name of the neighbor?
Brian?
D-A-V-I-E-S.
Thank you. And so, would you like to present your credentials?
Yes.
Well, let's swear everybody in first.
Okay.
All right. Whoever's testifying, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Davies, do you want to call him? Mr. Davey, he's, he came far away tonight. He asked, so I'm going to take him out of turn. He was actually going to speak in the public comment section. But I said I would call you as a witness first, so that, so that he could be on his way. So, Mr. Davies, could you tell us who you are and what your relation is to the applicant?
Sure. Ryan Davies. I'm the owner of 242 Windsor Avenue, directly connected to Nick, and he's my neighbor.
Okay, so that building, this is, this is a twin building, you share a party wall?
Correct.
Okay, and you're on the other side?
Mm-hmm.
And do you, how long have you owned that property?
Uh, three years.
And do you live there, or do you rent it?
No, it's a secondary property. I rent it, but I also stay there often.
But you use it, you use it as well? And you're from, you understand what Nick is proposing? The two rear roofs on the back of his property, he wants to convert to decks?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any concern about that at all?
No issues at all.
Are there other properties in the neighborhood that have similar decks out the rear?
For sure. My neighbor on the other side, 238, actually have a deck that's about, it's essentially like a half-story high coming off the back of their property. And then there's many others, of course, down the street.
Do you see any, any negative consequences onto your property from what Nick is proposing?
I do not.
And do you think that it's going to be an improvement to the visual character of the house? I think right now they're black asphalt-type roofs.
Yeah, I would say so. I did a lot of work on my house myself, so, yep.
Okay.
I do think so, yes.
Is it safe to say you're in support and in favor of the application and the proposal?
I am.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Davies? And, Miss, I'm sorry, Mr. Davies, where did you come from to be here this evening?
I came from Philadelphia. I live in Philadelphia.
Okay, and then you have to leave soon. Are you going back to Philadelphia, or are you staying?
No, I'm going back to my house. Yeah, I have some friends from college in town, so.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you, Mr. Davies.
You're very welcome.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you all.
And if you'd like to present your credentials, sir?
Yes. I'm a licensed professional engineer and professional planner in New Jersey. I also was licensed in 23 other states, one other country. I've been practicing engineering since nineteen-
1977. My planning license from 1981. I've testified at many board meetings. I've also testified in federal court in multiple states as an expert witness. Formerly a chief CEO of a national engineering firm, which I had founded, which had been sold to an international firm. And I now work as a part-time consultant to the fine firm of Gibson and Associates.
Okay, we accept you as a witness. Thank you.
Okay, Lou, how about you take us through, I guess we always start with the existing conditions on the site and what the proposal is?
Yes. This has already been entered as an application. Fairly simple, in that the building footprint is going to remain the same. So, we're not expanding in the back or side, the front. The only place that we're doing any work whatsoever is within that area. But as mentioned before, on the rear of the building, there's a small area that it's only one story, and that's where the decks will go, within that. So, the overall footprint, we're staying there, but we are encroaching in that area. Kind of like to follow the review letter a little bit. Craig has done a great job, as he normally has, with the review letter. And there's, there's a number of variances, but they're all existing variances. Lot size, existing non-conforming, lot width, lot frontage, rear yard, side yard. No variance for building height, so there's a little good news there. But none of which are changing. Lot coverage is same, floor area ratio is the same, and the parking is the same. There's no expansion in the number of bedrooms, number of people. It's a residential use, as exists today. It'll be the same residential use tomorrow. I would point out, there are four parking places required under RSIS. We provide zero. But I would like to put that in a little context, because this was built between 1880 and 1890. I did testify in front of the planning board here regarding the Presbyterian Church, and I will point out the same thing as I did there. That parking lot was developed before cars were invented. And this house was built prior to 1893, when the first vehicle was invented, and the first one was sold in 1896. So, when it was designed, they did design it for cars, because they had no cars. And it stayed the same for the last 130 years. The second thing, respect to the parking and the building. In 1920, the kitchen and bathroom facilities were added, which was seven years before the first zoning ordinance of any type in New Jersey. And this is probably my favorite, the RSIS. That was developed 20 years after. I'm not as old as this building, but I did predate by 20 years my PE license to RSIS. I just throw that for a little extra information. So all those variances, we are not making any worse than they are now. They're all existing and non-conforming. One thing about the deck, I think, just for the record, I believe you have this, but historic is approved, fire is approved, public works is approved, and shade tree. I believe you probably have all that information. I just wanted to verify that. In respect to the work that's being done, the deck is, that's going to be added, is mahogany, which I find to be one of the nicest woods there are. And I guess the Historic Commission, HRC, agreed, because they approved it. And right now, there's a roof there with some air conditioning equipment up on it. I personally, aesthetically, and as a professional, and someone I think with common sense, I hope, would think a mahogany deck is superior to, to HVAC units on a roof. And as testified, the neighbor said he, he would prefer that. Decks are certainly not inconsistent with the neighborhood. There's, there's decks in the rear throughout. That this, normally, when there's a use variances, will be consistent with the neighborhood. This house kind of created what the neighborhood is. Because there's a number of homes, without doing an in-depth study, but I have some knowledge of architecture, that were certainly built after this was built. So that it's been there for 140 years. At the end of the day, looking at the house from the street, it'll be the same house that it looked like 140 years ago. So we're certainly consistent with the neighborhood. There's this absolute safety issue. There's only one form of egress through. With this, there'll be another form of egress, being able to go from the third floor to the second floor, which absolutely would make it safer. The second and third floor, the applicant will testify, is they use as a home. And I know if, if I run the third floor, I'd certainly rather be on the second floor trying to get out than trying to get off from the third floor. It's absolutely safer. Aesthetically, it's, in my opinion, more pleasing. I think there's a number of positive criteria met. It's really de minimis, the air and light that's affected. There might be a little bit more because of the handrails. But if you look at the positiveness of removing two HVAC units in that roof and putting it up, the difference is absolutely, if there was anything that was de minimis or minimal, it would be that, in my opinion. I really do not see any negative effects to the zoning ordinance or the master plan by adding this. I think it enhances the building. I think it's a positive attribute to the neighborhood. And I certainly would, if, if I were a neighbor, and I, someone asked- I were a neighbor and I, someone asked, would you rather have a beautiful mahogany deck or look at an asphalt roof with a couple HVAC units? I think it would be like maybe a nanosecond for me to choose the mahogany deck. I don't wanna belabor this application. I could go into a number of items. The review letter, there's, we're in agreement with. One comment, the structure does not meet the strict definition of somebody's hatch. I agree with that. Broadly, it does, but, but specifically, it does not.
Yeah, it's an oddball. It doesn't fit the definition.
Right. But it is, the parting wall and the two units have been there, I think, since it was built in 1882 or 1888, really in the heart of the Victorian era. And they don't have onsite parking, but they've never had onsite parking. And I, and I do appreciate your, the parking problem here. The site plan we did for Presbyterian Church, we always, when we come down, I lived at the shore all my life, as have my multiple generations, and, you know, you have a lovely town here, but we, we just go to the Presbyterian Church to park. I'm happy to give them the money, and I know it's a nice place to park, but it's, it's a very pretty neighborhood on Windsor Avenue, and I just, I believe this will enhance it, and there won't be any negative effects, I think, on the intent or zoning there.
Okay, Lou, just a couple-
Sure.
-follow-up questions. Certainly sounds like it is a more desirable visual environment for all those reasons that you just put forth.
Yes.
With the railings, eliminating the black top roof, the visual aspect of the HVAC condenser units, they go down onto the ground. You agree with that?
Absolutely.
And putting those HVAC condensers on the ground, that's gonna eliminate how that noise travels through the entire neighborhood?
Yes, I have some experience with that. Our firm did hundreds and hundreds of controlled environmental vaults over a large area, and we're involved with the sound with the HVAC units of the controlled environmental vaults. And what it really comes down with noise is, if you go to a church, they have structures just absorb the noise. Any type of fence landscaping will absorb the noise. When you're up on a roof, it's almost like an echo chamber sending it out, whereas when you put it down and there's fences, and this is common, it's engineering, but it's common sense, there'll be less noise, so the noise level will reduce, which is an important thing.
So that's, that's, that's the negative criteria?
Yeah.
You're not, it's no substantial detriment to the public good. You're actually making the conditions better on the site for the public good-
Yes, absolutely.
-and the neighbors next door. So in, in addition to what it does for the neighborhood, it's, it's the aesthetic value, it's the, 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 removing the negative noise and whatnot, and also the health and welfare aspect of providing a second egress. There's other ways to do that. I mean, we've seen the stairs on the outside, fire escapes. That's not good.
Nowhere near as aesthetically pleasing.
These stairs are built within the deck area.
Within the deck area as part of the, the design.
So they're not sticking out any further there?
No.
They're within the existing footprint of the structure.
Yes, so if you had a fire escape, it would normally go on the outside. This is within the structure area.
And, and those are all benefits. So we have a, I guess, technically a small vertical intrusion into the side and rear yard because of the railings, and those railings are open-
They're open.
Spindles.
Yes.
Do all the benefits-
So the air can flow through it, light can go through it. The spindles don't really block any wind to speak of or any light to speak of.
And-
Not as really as much those HVAC units really block light more than the spindles do, in my opinion.
And all those, the benefits that you've, you've just gone through, do they substantially outweigh any detriment that you're gonna see from, from-
Substantially, I don't see really any detriment.
From, from the-
Not only do they outweigh it, there, there's a number that are positive, and I really don't see any negative.
Now, we are, are talking about the expansion of the, the structure, the use, technically.
Technically, but not the footprint.
Right, not the footprint. So because of that, can the building and can the site accommodate this?
Absolutely.
Expansion?
Absolutely.
Which is really just converting an existing area into a deck.
If you looked at the house from the front today and after, if the board so chooses to approve it, it's gonna look like the same house, looks like the same neighborhood. The building absolutely can support it. It really fits in with existing building because of three stories are, are part of the structure and the one story, there's space above it.
And it's, it's an expansion, but it's not the kind of expansion that, that adds a negative to the building such as adding a bedroom?
No.
Adding, okay.
We're not adding far, we're not adding a bedroom, we're not adding into any of the, the footprint setbacks.
Okay. Couple of questions for the applicant. Nick, how long have you owned this property?
Since the end of 2017.
And tell us how the property functions. What, what do you, what's on the first floor and what do you do with it?
So the first floor is a two-bedroom, one-bath rental unit, and then the second floor, second and third floor is the unit that we stay in, which is four-bedroom, two-bath.
How many bedrooms are up on the third floor that this new stairwell, stairs would, would access?
Two bedrooms.
And then there's only one way out? How's the existing, how's that function? Where's that located?
Well, there's one stairwell now to get down to the second floor only.
Now, the, the third and second floor, that's, that's the family residence?
Correct.
Do you rent that out or is that just-
Not, not at all.
These decks that you're proposing, they only access, they're only accessible by the third and, or the second and the third floor?
That's correct.
Which would be for your, your unit?
That's correct.
So the tenants that you're renting downstairs don't have access to the decks?
No.
They'll be relegated to the backyard, which I guess is what is the current?
Yep, correct.
Allowed to use an area back there? I, I, I think that's it. And you received HPC approval? In fact, I thought we were there a couple of times?
Yeah.
To flesh this out a little bit and come up with something that they liked?
Similar to, we redid the siding two years ago. Actually, Ryan and I did it together. We were thinking of doing Cedar Shake, and HPC said, well, the historical character of it was a Dutch lab, so we went with that and got approval and had a good experience. So when I went this time, I asked the historical board, you know, what they prefer for material and mahogany, which is lovely to me, so I'd be happy to do mahogany.
How's the parking work in the neighborhood?
It's only street parking, but if you're, if you own a property and you don't have a driveway, you can get a designated permitted parking spot, which I have.
So you have, everybody gets one parking space in the neighborhood for the owner?
Correct, if you don't have a driveway.
I have, I have nothing further. If anyone has any questions from either the applicant?
If there's no questions, we'll just go right on to Craig.
Thank you. I'd like to summarize my March 7, 2023 review. This is an application in the R2 zoning district. It's kind of a weird structure. It doesn't really fit the definitions of any of our really dwelling types, so that's, any expansion to that creates the expansion of a non-conforming use. So that's what we have here tonight. So this is a rear second and third floor decks and stair expansion onto that structure. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go out of order in, in my zoning chart. I'm sorry, completeness, there were no, there were no checklist items. We recommend deem this complete, so there's no waivers necessary for many of those items. Moving into the zoning review with the variances. Expansion of a non-conforming use, and that's triggered by the rear yard setback, and they're, it's totally vertical expansion. They're not expanding outside the footprint. So the rear yard setback requirement is 25 feet where 19.2 feet exists and 19.2 feet is proposed. The side yard setback has a total requirement of 15 feet. I'm sorry, we'll just talk about the one side. One side has, is required to be at least five feet. On that side, that's non-conforming. It exists at zero feet and 2.5 feet. Zero foot is proposed on that, on that side, so those are the two variances. Now, in addition to this being a non-conforming use, it's also a undersized lot with regards to lot area, lot width, and lot frontage. And so it triggers all of those, are all existing non-conforming situations. None of this is being exacerbated by the more technical variances, the way our code is written. And then there's the parking variance. So whenever you have one of these expansions, we have to look at the parking requirements. There's a four-space requirement for the two separate units. There's zero existing, and there's no opportunity to provide any new parking spots onsite, so, and this expansion doesn't result in the utilization of extra floor area, extra bedrooms, nothing that would necessitate any additional parking, so it's more of a technical variances. So those are the variances. Did not take any issue with the testimony, and I'm gonna roll right into my general review comments, which all should be conditions of approval. One is our standard condition that they have to conform with the flood damage protection requirements of Chapter 258. Our standard condition that if the improvements create any adverse stormwater runoff patterns, that a grading and drainage plan is required to be approved by the zoning board engineer. Three, sidewalk adjacent to the subject site shall be replaced to the satisfaction of the engineer. Four is our standard requirement that they have to post the inspection escrow and tie the certificate of occupancy to the acceptance of those improvements. Five, the applicant shall comply with the requirements of the Shade Tree Commission and all other commissions. I think we got Fire Department review approved, Public Works approved, Shade Tree approved with the following conditions, that you protect the mulberry that's existing there, and the sycamore tree, that's your street tree.
Yeah, out front, yeah.
So that's, that's the conditions that they've requested. Six is our standard condition, they have to comply with all other necessary state, county, and local approvals. Seven is we will need ultimately evidence of final HPC approval. Eight is compliance with all applicable affordable housing requirements. Nine is providing the requisite number of compliance sets for review and approval, so.
We don't take any exception to the conditions.
That's a summary. I'm happy to answer any board questions.
Are there any questions from the board? Like to open it up to anyone within 200 feet of the property? Within 200 feet?
I believe so. Maybe I'm 201 feet because I didn't get any notice, but Martin Van Walsum, 329 Congress Street. I wasn't clear-
Can you raise your hand?
Sorry?
Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes. I wasn't clear, you're providing egress from the third floor to the second floor, but how do they get to the ground?
Do you want me to answer that?
Sure.
The, in order to do that, we would have to go outside the building envelope, so therefore we're not, because we're, we're staying within, in those setbacks. So the safety of it is that you can get from the third floor to second floor. There's two forms of egress, and practically speaking, I, I look at myself in that. If I had to go out to the third floor, I don't know.
Well, certainly, jumping from the second floor is better than jumping from the third floor, but you're still jumping 10 feet.
Which is far better than it is today.
And there's no requirement that there be egress from a third story? Is it a rental property in the third floor?
No.
Okay. So the reason I say this-
And that's not, the, the third floor and the second floor aren't rental property?
The reason I'm, I'm raising-
Rental is on the first.
Sure. The reason I'm raising the point is that your neighbor across the street at the larger building, the rental property, has a series of decks and stairways on the back of the house that is significantly diminishing the property value of the people behind there. So while it may be fine for your immediate next-door neighbor who, who your, your houses adjoin, the neighbors behind you aren't here tonight, so that's their problem. I would just wanna know that if you are required to provide egress to the first floor, I believe that would require another zoning hearing. Is that correct? Because you'd now be in the setback.
We're only approving what they have on the plan. So if they, when they go in for construction permit review and they're required to do something different and it changes the nature of this and it requires additional variance, yes, they would have to move back to the floor.
Okay, thanks for confirming that. My understanding from the neighbors across the street, which are, that, that have this in their backyard now, was that somehow it got through zoning, and it's not even, it's not mahogany, it's pressure-treated lumber. So changes get made sometimes on these projects. I'm sure that's not going to be the case here. And then, Ron, if you could just check and see if 329 Congress Street is within 200 feet? Can I ask you to do that?
No, the applicant relies on the certified list of property owners with 200 feet provided by the tax assessor and municipality. If you're not on it, I assume you're not on it.
Okay, so closed to the public? And do the motion?
Sure. It's a motion to grant a use variance for the expansion of a non-conforming use along with the expansion of a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot, as well as a variance for lot size, lot width, and lot frontage, rear yard setback, side yard setback, each in total, as well as parking, as well as a condition that the applicant comply with the March 7, 2023, Palistina report.
Okay, would somebody like to?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sheehan, seconded by Mr. Ledwin. Ms. Sheehan? Mrs. Notch?
Yes.
Mr. Ledwin?
Yes.
Ms. Hessel?
Yes.
Mr. Zexer?
Yes.
Mr. Vannudo?
Yes.
Mrs. Werner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Board Members, for your time. I know it was a long evening for you.
Thank, thank you very much, everyone.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
All in favor? Thank you, everyone.